At this time, I'll call our regular meeting to order. We welcome everyone here this evening and those that are here virtually. We have with us Dick and Pat Snyder, who is going to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let's begin as we do all good things, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, all legitimate authority comes from you. You've taught us that civil authority is necessary for the order of society. You've also taught us that law and civil authority are subordinate and subject to your law. As a nation, we beg your mercy because we're in trouble, living in a culture of death and fear with our freedoms that are your gift to us, including our ability to gather and worship you being eroded every day. We beg you to bless this board with the gifts of the Holy Spirit: wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, piety, and fear of the Lord, as they strive to support the residents of Hope Mills. Remind them daily of their responsibilities, first to you, and then to the people of this wonderful community that they serve. For you are but servants, and the way we serve you is by serving our neighbor. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. May Almighty God bless you. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. For our agenda tonight, I do have one addition, and that would be item G, and that would be consideration of recommendation by the nominating committee. Are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
Commander Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add item H under new business: discussion regarding a notice of code violation for 5606 Pate Street.
Okay, so we have two items to add under new business. Is there anything else? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first thing that we have on our agenda tonight is a special presentation, and I'm going to invite Gerald McKeechy, if he will, to come up. And we're going to let him use the microphone of Commissioner Morley, and he is going to give us a recitation of a portion of Dr. Martin Luther King's speech. And we were blessed to have him here last year, so we thought it was neat he was coming back. And we like to put him up here so that way he gets the... Since we're on Zoom. So I'll turn it over to you, sir.
My name is Jerel.
Jerel. I'm sorry, it's Jerel. You can take your mask down. Yes.
I say to America, is be true to what you said on paper. If I lived in China or even Russia or any totalitarian country, maybe I could understand some of these evil injunctions. Maybe I could understand the denial of certain basic First Amendment privileges because they uncommit themselves to that over there. But somewhere I am of the freedom of assembly. Somewhere I am of the freedom of speech. Somewhere I am of the freedom of press. Somewhere I am that the greatness of America is the right to protest, full right. And so just as I say, we all can learn the dogs or whatever just turn us around. Welcome when the injunction turn us around. But I don't know what will happen now. We've got some difficult days ahead. But it doesn't matter to me now because I've been to the mountain. And I don't mind. Like anybody, I'd like to live a long life. Longevity has its place. But I'm not concerned about that now. I just want to do God's will. And He's allowed me to go up to the mountain. And I've looked over and I've seen the promised land. I may not get there yet, but I want to know tonight that we as a people will get to the promised land. And so I'm happy tonight. I'm not worried about anything I'm not feeling anymore. My eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord.
Thank you so much. And parents, I know you're very proud of that young man.
Mayor Warner, very fitting was that this evening. With yesterday been Martin Luther King's Day. That was very fitting that he came forward today and did a fantastic job. Fantastic job. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. At this time, I have a special proclamation to read. And this is Black History Month proclamation. Whereas the black family has been a topic of study in many disciplines: history, literature, the visual arts, and film studies, sociology, anthropology, and social policy. The 2021 theme, the black family, representation, identity, and diversity, speaks therefore to the complexity of the foundations of the African-American family life, which have been reverced, stereotyped, and vilified from the days of slavery to our own time. Whereas the black family knows no single location since family reunions and genetic ancestry searches testify to the spread of family members across states, nations, and continents. Not only are individual black families dysphoric, but Africa and the diaspora itself have been long portrayed as the black family at large. Whereas the definition of the black family has been the subject of numerous debates over how to represent its meaning from a historical perspective: as slave or free, as patriarchal or matriarchal, as single-headed or dual-headed household, as extended or nuclear, as fictive kin or blood lineage, as legal or common law, and as black or interracial, et cetera. Whereas the theme, representation, identity, and diversity of black family offers a rich tapestry of images for exploring the African-American past and present. Whereas since the 1976, black history has been celebrated the entire month of February, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Hope Mills do hereby proclaim the month of February Black History Month and urge all citizens of our community to give full regard to the past and continuing service of African-Americans in our city, our state, and our nation. Next, I have a proclamation for Hope Mills School Choice Week. Whereas all children in the Hope Mills should have access to the highest quality education possible. Whereas from Alaska to New York, America will light up in yellow and red to raise awareness about K-12 education opportunities during National School Choice Week 2021. Whereas there are a variety of school choice options available for many of the 2.3 million children living in North Carolina. Families in North Carolina can choose from traditional public schools, public charter schools, public magnet schools, private schools, online academics, and homeschooling. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhance the vibrancy of our community. Whereas Hope Mills has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Therefore, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, do hereby recognize January 24th to January 30th, 2021, as Hope Mills School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation from the North Carolina DOT and FAMPO, and this is on future projects. And I will turn it over to... Mr. Hines?
Good evening. I'm Richie Hines with NC DOT. I'll be brief and will point out that if y'all put me on the agenda again so I have to follow Mr. Jerel, then I'm going to start requesting meetings later.
Okay.
Tonight, I've asked Mr. Darius Sturdivant, who's our Division VI Planning Engineer, to prepare a presentation to hopefully answer a lot of your questions about the projects in and around Hope Mills. I'm going to stick around, of course, to do his presentation. If you have any detailed questions, I'll be glad to answer them at that time if it's something related to what Darius presented.
Okay, thank you, sir. And he will be on the screen.
You might want to fix that microphone. Thank you.
I don't think it's just the microphone. It's in here. Let's see if we can hear you now. Try it again. Can y'all hear him?
I can hear you.
Try it again. Do you have the ability to turn your volume up any higher?
My volume is up to the max.
Okay, that's all I know to do. You may. Can you try now?
Can you hear me?
How about now? Go ahead. Speak... Go ahead one more time if you would.
Can you hear me?
A little bit better?
Yep.
Might be the best I can do for you right now.
Is it loud enough for everyone to hear?
If we don't breathe too loudly, yes. So they may need you to repeat, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, I'll try to be brief. I will share my screen so you guys can see the presentation that I put together. I don't know if I can. If not, I'll just go through it.
Okay, I've made him the host, so he should be able to share his screen now.
I've made you the host, so you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Okay. Again, my name is Darius Sturdivant. Thank you for allowing me to take part in your meeting tonight. I'm the Division Planning Engineer based at the Division Office in Fayetteville. And tonight, I'm going to give an update regarding transportation projects in the Hope Mills area. Let's see. I'm going to give just a brief overview of just a few topics I want to kind of touch on this evening. I'll start off with talking about major roadway projects in the region. I talk about completed projects in Hope Mills. Also, I want to briefly touch on program, STIP projects. And STIP, that is the acronym for our State Transportation Improvement Program, which is our 10-year capital improvement program, which currently covers the years 2020 through 2029. I also want to briefly talk about funding and project prioritization and also current planning efforts in the area. I'll start off with the I-95 widening project. We're widening I-95 to eight lanes north of Fayetteville. That project has been broken out into two sections. There's an A section and a B section. The A section is from Exit 56 of I-95. There at the I-95 Business 301 interchange, north to Exit 71, which is Long Branch Road in Harney County. Construction on that stretch of 95 started in the fall of 2019. So just a little over a year now we've been on that project, and it's scheduled to be completed in 2024. The B section is from Exit 71, Long Branch Road, up to Exit 81, which is the I-40, I-95 interchange in Benson. Construction is scheduled to start on that section in the summer of 2021, and it's scheduled to be complete by 2025. Next up is the I-95 widening south of Fayetteville. That project has been broken into three segments for budgeting purposes. The A section is from Exit 22 in Lumberton, and that's right at Robinson Community College, that exit, if you're familiar with that area, up to mile marker 29 near St. Paul's in Robinson County. And the construction is scheduled to start on that section of 95 in the fall of 2022 and should be complete by 2026. The B section is from mile marker 29 near St. Paul's up to mile marker 37, just south of Hope Mills. And that project portion is also scheduled to begin in the fall of 2022, and construction should be complete by 2026. The C section, right there at Hope Mills, that's from mile marker 37 to mile marker 40, which is the I-95 Business 301 interchange. Construction is underway. This is actually part of the Fayetteville Outer Loop Project, which I'm sure if you drive south of... Also, you driving south on 95, you've seen construction on the Outer Loop at this location. But the widening, this section of 95, is included in that project, and construction is expected to be complete in the summer of 2022. Last but not least, the Fayetteville Outer Loop Project. The C section between Clifton Road and Rayford Road, that section opened to traffic back in August. And there are two remaining sections currently underway. You have the section, the C section, the AAAB section from Camden Road out to 95. That section is scheduled to be complete in the summer of 2022. And you have the section between Rayford Road and Camden Road, where right-of-way acquisition is currently underway, and the construction contract is scheduled to be awarded in the fall of 2022 with an estimated completion date of 2026. And in recent years, there's been, you know, a number of projects being completed in the Hope Mills area. And I just want to briefly kind of go through those. We have the 162 Elk Road Project, which was the new four-lane divided median roadway from NC-59 over to US-301. Also, the Southern Avenue Legion Road Widening Project from On Drive down to Elk Road. The I-95 Business 301, the median project, they're from NC-59 up to NC-87, the MLK Freeway in Fayetteville. Also, the NC-59 Main Street Median Project between Camden Road and Rockfish Lake. And also, we did a project recently where we did some minor intersection improvements at the NC-59 Camden Road Interchange. Also, the US-301 Bridge Replacement Project over Business 95 was completed about a year ago. And also, the NC-59 Bridge Replacement Project over Business 95 as well. And to kind of touch on some of the projects that are currently in our 10-year capital improvement program. We have the Camden Road Widening Project, and that's widening to multi-lanes from the Fayetteville Outer Loop, where that ties in at Camden Road over to NC-59 Hope Mills Road. Right-of-way is scheduled for fiscal year '21. Construction is scheduled to begin in fiscal year 2024. Also have the U-4709 Project, which is the Rockfish Road and Golf View Road widening projects. Those two roads will be widened to multi-lanes. Rockfish Road from Golf View Road over to NC-59, and Golf View Road from Rockfish over to NC-59. For that project, right-of-way is scheduled to begin in 2022, and construction will also begin in 2022. And we also have the U-6001 Project, which is the NC-59 South Main Street Project, which we're widening between Shipman Road and Parkton Road. We have right-of-way scheduled for 2029. Construction is currently unfunded. We have the Rockfish Road-Stony Point Road Widening Project. It's the U-6072A, and we're showing widening to multi-lanes from Gillis Hill Road over to Camden Road. Right-of-way is scheduled to begin in 2029. Construction's unfunded. Also have Rockfish Road widening on the U-6072B Project, and that's widening to multi-lanes from Camden Road to Golf View Road. Right-of-way is currently unfunded, and construction is currently unfunded. U-6073, which is Fisher Road Widening, and that's widened to multi-lanes from Strickland Bridge Road over to NC-162 George Owen Road. We're showing right-of-way scheduled for 2025, and construction scheduled for 2028. And these are just the maps here, just to kind of give you a little familiarity with the area and these projects. This is the U-4709 Project, which shows the widening between Rockfish Road... Well, Rockfish Road from Golf View over to Main Street. And this also shows the Golf View Road widening from Rockfish over to Main Street. This is an overview of the 6000, U-6001 Project, which is the South Main Street Widening. And now I want to talk just a little bit briefly about project prioritization. This is... This could be a very lengthy topic, so I'll try to keep it simple, as simple as possible, so I won't get too far down into the weeds. But I'm sure a lot of you may have heard of the Strategic Transportation Investments Law, which is our new way of prioritizing and funding projects. It was signed into law back in 2013. And as part of the law, it includes the Strategic Mobility Formula, which is a data-driven process. Projects are funded based on data and scores, quantitative scoring and qualitative scoring. Project analysis and quantitative scores are provided by the NC DOT Spot Office. And project scores also include local input, which we'll get into as we get further into the SPOT cycle. And if any of you attend any of the FAMPO meetings, you will hear the reference to the SPOT methodology. And basically, what FAMPO does is that they'll put together a methodology, which is kind of their way of ranking and scoring projects. And based off approval of the TCC and TAC, they come up with a scoring system, and they're able to assign points to projects. So you have a total of... You have the combined quantitative score, which is computed by the NC DOT Spot Office along with the local input, which is based off of FAMPO's methodology, which is the qualitative portion of the score. And that gives you a total project score. And that's what's used to determine if projects score well enough to be included in the Transportation Improvement Program. This Strategic Mobility Formula that I just referred to was just... was first used in SPOT 3.0. We are currently in Cycle 6, so we're in SPOT 6.0. Projects for this current cycle were submitted back in the summer, and quantitative scores are scheduled to be released in the summer of 2021. Just want to note, there could be a delay based on available funding. As you guys know, we were affected significantly by COVID and a few other issues in the department. And we kind of held back and kind of slowed down this particular cycle of SPOT. But barring any other unforeseen delays, we expect the next funding document, which will cover the years 2023 to 2032, to be released in August of 2022, and that'll be the draft. Current planning efforts in the Hope Mills area. We've had the Hope Mills Multimodal Congestion Management Plan that was completed in 2018. The Fayetteville Area NPO Metropolitan Transportation Plan completed in 2019. And this plan is fiscally constrained, and it is federally required, and it is updated every five years. We have SPOT 6.0, project prioritization, which I just mentioned, and we're in that process now. And we also have the Cumberland County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and that is currently underway. And I just want to give you a heads up. Over the next several weeks, FAMPO municipalities, including Hope Mills, will be contacted by the FAMPO staff and the Transportation Planning Division to review the draft plan recommendations and solicit input for developing the final plan recommendations. So be on the lookout for that. But with that, that concludes my information of what I have tonight. And here's our contact information. You'll see my information here, and also you'll see Richie's information and our team at the Division Office. So if you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to any of us, and we'll do our best to get your questions answered.
Anyone have any questions that you have at this time?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Legg?
Sir, this is Commissioner Jerry Legg. Do you see anything during this pandemic that's going to slow us down, such as funding or buying the land or anything? Or just all taken care of already? Did you cut me off?
I didn't quite catch all of your question.
I said it as...
I couldn't quite hear all of it.
I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Jerry Legg. My question being to you, is all of this already in concrete? You already have all the right-of-ways purchased? And is funding going to be held up because of the COVID-19?
Well, we are getting in a better position as far as funding. I think we have about $1 billion now, and our cash balance is about up to $1 billion, which was really low during, I guess, during the shutdown, during the height of the shutdown. So we may be in a better position. I mean, funding is always fluid, just because, you know, it fluctuates. So I hate to say that it's going to be one thing, and it may turn out to be another. But as far as how we're looking right now from a cash balance standpoint, I don't expect there... There may be some delays, but I don't think it's going to be as bad as we thought it would be. So it looks like that things are slowly turning around, so that's a good thing.
Well, that's good. Thank you very much. Every time I drive out around the city limits, sometimes I have to look to find a way to go, because you guys are getting so much done. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
We appreciate the update tonight. Appreciate you taking your time, and thank you, Mr. Hines, for being here also. And again, thank you for bringing that information to us this evening.
And thank you for allowing me to join you guys virtually.
We've learned to do this now, and I feel like we're getting pretty good at it. Thank you for coming on board.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Can we get a copy? This is Kewonna McCray. Can we get a copy of your presentation email to us, please?
Sure. I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all righty then. Thank you so much. All right, the next thing that we have on our agenda is the Fiscal Year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Audit Presentation from Thompson Price, Scott Adams and Company. And I'll start off by introducing our Finance Director, Mr. Drew Hollins.
You have to get that fixed, Drew.
Okay, I think he'll stay there. Okay, we had our annual audit done earlier this year, actually, back, finished it in October, and we were going to present it in December, but we didn't have the second meeting in December, so we rescheduled it for tonight. Stuart Hill is here from Thompson Price. I never can remember all the names of their firm. I don't remember. TPSA Certified Public Accountants. Stuart's here. They've been doing our audit for the last several years. They do a great job. We get it in time, and it's accurate, and it's right, and I'll have Stuart come and talk about it now.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight with y'all to go over your June thirty, two thousand twenty audit. You should have a copy of the full audit report, or Drew's going to get it to you. But we're going to go for, we've got an abbreviated version and a presentation summary in the little folder that's the black binder.
Thank you, sir.
So first of all, in the first few pages of the black binder there, there's a letter, and it basically just says that your accounting procedures are proper, we didn't have any difficulties. Drew and his staff do a great job of being available for questions and providing information and documentation, and we're happy to say that we have a clean audit, there's no findings, everything is good. You've got a top-notch staff, and so we appreciate that as well. Over on page four, there's a lot of data. We're not going to read through all that data, but those are the numbers that create the charts that follows, starting on page five. And we'll start with those charts on page five and go through some of the key items, key trends. We have a five-year trend on most of these charts, so that you can see how it is progressing year after year. So on top of page five, we have your total fund balance. The total fund balance is the blue bars, and the restricted or assigned fund balance is represented by the red bars. And you can see in two thousand sixteen, your total fund balance was about nine point two million dollars, and in two thousand twenty, it's about seven point three million. The restricted part of that in two thousand sixteen was three point two million, and in two thousand twenty is six hundred fifty thousand. The chart at the bottom is basically a percentage of your fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. The blue line represents Hope Mills, and the red line represents other towns in the state of similar population. That population range is a ten thousand to fifty thousand population. It's a large range, but that's what the state provides for us. So you can see that your percentage is, in two thousand sixteen, was seventy-nine point seven percent of your general fund expenditures, and in two thousand twenty is fifty-three point seven eight percent of the general fund expenditures. The red line doesn't go all the way to two thousand twenty, because everybody hasn't got all their audits in yet, so the state doesn't give us those numbers just yet. So that's why the red bar doesn't go all the way out to two thousand twenty. On the next page, we have the similar percentage of your unassigned fund balance. You can see in two thousand sixteen, that was fifty-two percent, and in two thousand twenty is thirty-five point three six percent. So that's the portion of your general fund balance that is unassigned. The chart at the bottom of the page reflects the general fund revenues over or under expenditures. In two thousand sixteen, you had a one point two million dollar surplus, and in two thousand twenty, you've got a three hundred and seventy-five thousand deficit. That has to do with when projects are, you're collecting money from projects and you're spending money from projects, so that's a big part of that dynamic. On page seven, we have the two charts. One is your cash balances, and the other, the one on the right, is the fund balances. The general fund is the largest part in both categories, and the red is basically all the other funds. So you can see the amounts down at the bottom, that's what's in those cash balances and fund balances, as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. On page eight, we're looking at your property tax rates, and you can see there, the blue line again is Hope Mills, the red line is with other towns of similar size in North Carolina, and the rates have been the same for Hope Mills for this whole five-year period, and that's forty-six cents per hundred in value. On the bottom of page six, I'm sorry, eight, is the tax percentage of collections. So you can see there, your percentage of collection in two thousand twenty was ninety-eight point nine nine percent, and you can see the red line being the other towns of similar size, and then the green one, the state provided also the statewide average, regardless of the size of the towns. On page nine, we'll go to the top charts. The one on the left represents your property values, and the one on the right in blue is the total actual levy amount. In two thousand sixteen, you had about one point one billion dollars in property values, and in two thousand twenty, you've got a one point two billion dollars in property values. The actual levies were five point two million in two thousand sixteen, and about five point five million in two thousand twenty. The bottom of page nine, we're looking at your general fund revenues by categories, and you can see there that your ad valorem taxes is the largest of your revenue categories, followed by the intergovernmental revenues, which is local option sales tax and other distributions from the state primarily. And then third is the sales and service, which is mostly refuse collections, some partial recreations, other things that the town charges to citizens. And on page ten, we have a similar chart that represents the expenditures of the general fund by category, and you can see there that the largest category for expenditures is public safety, followed by the general government, and then cultural and recreation. And I know that was really quick and just a tip of the iceberg, but that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, be glad to try to answer them, and once again, we appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, do we have any commissioner has a question in reference to, now, of course, you've got the full report, and that probably you may have some questions after you go through and look at that, but do you have any questions tonight in reference to the presentation that basically says that our finance department has done a great job again, and the reports were all done in a timely manner, and that our tax collection is, we're doing better than the state as far as percentage and collection? So any questions or any concerns?
I'd just like to thank you for such a fine report. Of course, I guess we created it.
Absolutely.
You had to write it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if you do have any questions at any time, you can let me know. I would say, one thing that is different in this year's report that we have not had in previous reports that we presented to you, I guess, back in September, October, is the CAFER certification that we have now, which does become part of the financial report. So anytime we win that certificate, we have to have it in the next year's report, showing that we did get it. We have submitted the report for the CAFER award again this year, and we'll continue to do that as we go on. I would suggest, if you do want to sit down and read parts of this without looking at the actual numbers, pages one through three is the manager's letter that highlights some of the things that we've done in the last year. If you go to the notes section, about in the middle of it, you can look at each heading of the note paragraphs, and if anything looks interesting, that's good for information. And then the very back section, the statistical section, there's about eighteen charts there that show a ten-year comparison from two thousand eleven all the way to two thousand twenty of a snapshot of each one of the last ten years for comparison's sake. So again, if you have any questions, let me know, and we'll carry on for next year. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda, we have with us this evening Robert Van Gheens from Federal Criminal Economic Development Corporation with an update, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Van Gheens, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I did something I shouldn't have done, which is, there is an update in here from the presentation I had sent, which means, as we've seen with technology, the best ideas can go in a wanton way, so I apologize in advance for any technical operator error. Are we safe enough at this? My beard fell off, actually. Thanks for this opportunity to be with you today. Thank you to your manager for proposing this after a presentation I had given, I believe it was to the Mayor's Advisory Committee here. I'm sorry, the Mayor's Coalition. We've got different groups there, so it gets, what we call our advisory group is the Mayor's Advisory Council, and yours is the municipal mayor's...
Coalition.
Coalition, yeah. And then we've got MAC, which is our Manufacturing Advisory Council. I mean, again, you can see, we get into talks super quickly there. But thank you for this opportunity. When I gave that presentation, I did introduce our staff, and if you would, at your leisure on our website, fayedc.com, through COVID, through the trials and tribulations, the evolution, we are actually at full staff with the addition of our new Communications Director, Sarah Suggs, who had been with the Woodpeckers and the Dogma Festival before that, and we've added a fellow, Rob Patton, in a vice president role. So we've got quite a team right now, and it's already started to pay dividends for us. One of the things that we worked on and started talking about, and it was a couple years in the making, and we talked about it in number circles, was we did launch the Can Do Carolina brand platform in December, and for those that are not familiar with it, you can learn more about it at candocarolina.com. Importantly, what happened was, you've got a lot of your tax dollars going to different organizations, the Arts Council, the TDA, the CVB, the EDC, more initiatives for everybody. But what we were doing was telling great stories about our community, about our towns, about this county, but we were doing it in very different ways, under different taglines. You wouldn't know that I came from Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, or Fayetteville, Georgia, and so we got together and said, are we all willing to work together, starting with those groups that do the most outward marketing? Turns out, the city and county at the time were also both thinking about updating their brand. I said, well, it's going to be crazy for all of us to spend our money to create brands that potentially compete with each other. And that led us to a process that took a little longer with COVID than we had hoped. It slowed us down. We wanted to do a big reveal, and then we said, we just got to get this out. But in the end, we had more than four thousand people participate through online surveys. We went out and surveyed industry and business leaders around the state. We talked to people in other cities about what they thought about Cumberland County and Fayetteville, what they knew about our communities, what they knew about our municipalities. And in the end, we came up with here, if you haven't seen the video yet, again, people can see it at candocarolina.com. This video, I think, underlines what we found out were the unifying principles our citizens felt defined us. For a brand to work, it has to be both authentic, being as real and based in reality, but also we want it to be aspirational. And we want it to be an external message we put out, but the one thing we kept coming back to, time and time again across this county, is we are our harshest critics, and this is an internal campaign as well, is that we want people to see all the good things that are around them, their neighbors, the opportunities we have here, our diversity. So you see here, the underlying principles, and this being a platform, are these four statements: We find a way, we care for one another, we protect the world, and we always go further. For the regional brand that anchors this, it is the Can Do Carolina concept, that that is who we are. But the unique thing about this, because the Arts Council is different than the Chamber, and the city is different than the county, and Hope Mills is different than Spring Lake, and I'm alluding to the next steps, every one of the partners has interpreted this a bit differently with commonality. So we have the same colors, we have the same fonts, we have the same overarching messaging, but it's also flexible and usable. And so we are pushing forward now with this next round of conversations, getting the word out, putting these concepts out there everywhere you go, coming back to those four pillars, but also each partner using it in their own way. And yes, those are, a shameless plug, but I believe are the two cutest girls in all of Cumberland County. I'm admittedly biased, my daughter's down there, we're at in Cecilia, but whether it's t-shirts, we're at the airport, this positive, inspiring message being shared. We're hoping to get it out to the private sector and engage them. No Dirtbag Yells has not yet done a Can Do Carolina Philsner, but I believe we might have some people in this room that can start pushing us in that direction. So what we're looking to do now is gather the stories in our community that reflect back. Where are our neighbors doing incredible things for neighbors in a humble fashion, which is what we're known for here, that community of service? How can we tell that story and represent what we see time and again in our schools and in our community? We are expanding this, and that's what brought it to the Mayor's Coalition, was that we talked to the core partners who do the most spending on marketing, trying to get them together, the TDA... spending on marketing, trying to get them together, the TDA, the CVB, the EDC. And now we want to take it out to FSU, to FTCC, to PWC, and the municipalities, and that brings us here. We are not asking people to give up their identity. We're asking them to consider blending their story into that of the broader community and incorporating components of that. And that's the next round. And I would say that in general, people have been, actually, I shouldn't say in general, with almost no exceptions, which after two years and a project like this, those core values must be true of who we are because it's been unanimously favorably received, which I'll tell you, someone who has seen this fail in other communities is, is a rare thing. And we hope that you'll want to be part of that. We hope that you'll be open to it. There's no pressure. There's no necessarily cost. We just want to drive the conversation to the next level. It's working for us. We have private sector businesses that are actually changing their entire name to embrace this concept of being forward-thinking and can do. But, that's, that's all I wanted to share with that. We look forward to hopefully talk with you more about it. The door's open, and we hope you want to be part of that. So, we do hope this. I'm going to go quick through these. We can talk more. We can talk anytime. I hate that COVID has kept us away from in-person meetings as much because we do love coming down here, whether it's on the Gateway Plan, or to talk to staff about projects. One thing we have in doing though, is pushing hard on a, even prior to the brand coming out, we don't do a good job of telling our stories here. It's not our fault we don't have a TV station anymore, but we don't. It's not our fault that the observer, if they're listening, it's okay. Don't have the reporting staff they used to. I mean, I can't, sometimes we have a hard time even getting a thousand job announcements out there in the paper, but I know they're busy. So, how do we tell our story? We've got to push it beyond this region. We've got to get it picked up nationally. And so, we've been working to really help get the word out on some of these great things with a firm called DCI, and we've been able to get into the economist's Bloomberg markets. We've paid for some placement with the tech publications, Ditch Magazine. We think it's important to talk about all the good things that are happening here. And that's everything from quality life, to cost of life, to innovators, wherever it can be. This, this county, this region, our communities, we are large enough, smart enough, and important enough that we should be represented on the national stage. Again, I come back to, and I know it's a Fayetteville statistic, but there are 16 states without a city the size of Fayetteville in it. We are now the 100, right on the edge of the top 100 metros. If you think about how many cities you know by name and see in press, there's a lot of communities a lot smaller than ours that are getting picked up. It's our turn to tell our story, and that's what we're working to do here. Another creative thing that we've been working on the last year is, we are creating a network of communities that are their nations. If they're an allied military and allied trade partner, they have to be both, so that they, we can serve their military and they can serve ours. But, we're connecting with them to find their Fayetteville. There isn't a place like Fort Bragg, I mean, that's fine, their Fort Bragg and their Fayetteville communities. The cities and the communities and the counties that are the home of their airborne and special op partners, there's only one place like that in each nation. So, Cumberland County, is it here? It's Lubislic, Poland. I, I, they are much nicer than my pronunciation would justify. On that, it's Herefordshire in the UK. It's Claw, Germany. And these mayors and these counties and these regions, we're starting to build this network of conversations. But, they've already invited us to participate in their trade shows as soon as we're able to travel again. So, that is, I'll call it a twist on sister city concepts, but it's something that nobody else has done, and I think it's going to be a really neat thing. We look forward to having their delegations and their business committee over here as soon as we're able in the coming years, if we're able to travel again. We partnered up with the SEED Network. If you haven't heard of them yet, you will. It'll be coming out officially, launching later on this month, and it is Sand Hills Entrepreneurial Engagement Network. We'd love your staff appropriate to be part of that, your Chamber to be part of that, and we can partner up. This is aligning all the entrepreneur support resources across the sand. We are not, my, my thing at the EDC is, we are more than happy, if, if it needs to be done, we're willing to lead. We are happy to, to partner, and we're happy to follow. In this case, we're kind of like a following partner. UNC Pembroke got a big grant from Golden Leaf, and so there is kind of the point. But, us and FSU and Susie Herbowski from SEED and other regional partners are supporting it and building this network. Because, again, like, like I often like to say, together we are far stronger than we're going to be on an individual basis. Just a few things, if I could, on our overall economic climate. If they have, we do have new numbers. November numbers did not come out until just a week or two ago, and I'll be frank, I haven't had a chance to process them yet. But, as you can see here, this slide shows employment in Cumberland County from our high in February of 122,000 to the steep drop by April to our rise coming out of it. And what the simple math says, I, I can do using my fingers and toes and rounding, is that we've got around 8,000 people that have not been able to get back into the workforce yet. If we look at half of our economy, manufacturing, certain office work, distribution, we are having statistically the best year that I think anyone knows of in many years. And you've seen it all around you with the projects we'll talk about in a moment, being built here and even in this, in your town. On the flip side of that, all these restaurants, these customer-serving businesses, these hotels, these people are suffering, and we don't have an answer for it. And parents are out there dealing with virtual learning. We're talking about getting internet to them. So, it's, it's a, it's a very challenging time, and it's, it's almost as if a couple hundred years ago, that original tale of two cities, best of times, worst of times, was right on point. From an economic sense, we're actually, we're seeing that here in our community. If you'll just look at this here, these are claimants for unemployment. You'll see at the top on the right, the grays are the, are the age. You'll see that this disproportionately is hitting our younger community. It's also hitting our minority community. And these were the new filings in October. What was really telling is not necessarily who loses a job, but who's been unable to find work for an extended period. And you can see, it goes even further to youth and our minority communities. And our trade and transportation, we're going to back up one, you'll see, not, not as many folks lost it then. They'd already lost it, and they haven't been able to get back in. So, I think these are just some very telling trends as we, as we enter the new year. As we talk to employers and to workers, we still hear childcare accessibility. It was an issue for us in this community before COVID-19. It remains that it's even more so now. Balancing virtual schooling, a lot of municipalities, a lot of government offices have had people who say, I have to go home. I have to, I have to be there for my child so they can virtually learn. If you're a single parent, or, or maybe even harder yet, if you're a single grandparent taking care of someone's child, how do you balance all those things in a world where you still need to work? And some of our entities' folks have a skill set that they are great at, but right now, it's not, being able to transition is something that's not impacting by 2019. And then, the availability and affordability of broadband access. Major announcement last week with the Metronet, 22 months in the making. I, they've been down here and spoken with y'all, and I would say that we've been talking to them some time, but they got the fastest and most welcoming response here from Hope Mills. Y'all set lightning speed records on your reception. I think it's because you've been at the table on this issue from the forefront, and you know how important it is for your citizens and for this county. We should not, we have issues with affordability, and we need to work on that, and we will work on that. But, we also have issues where regardless of whether or not you can afford it, you just don't have the service. And in this day and age, we should not have students having to go sit in a car outside a school bus to do their homework.
Right.
Not because of cost, just because there is no other option available to them. We can fix that. We can also fix, work on the cost side, and we will, and we are. But, this is a big step forward to at least ensuring we have the platform we need to compete on the global, global scale. So, it's a $70 million investment. It'll be coming up through Hope Mills first, I believe, is where they're making their connections on their backbone and working their way up. And just a major, major step forward for us. Something that we've all, we've all had for a long period of time. So, when I talk about the jobs, and I promise I will rap quick, these are the companies we're hiring with, that we've been hiring with. It's more than $1,000 opportunities were announced all in. I think we did close to 1,500 jobs that we processed at our place, along with the thousands more done at the Workforce Development Board. All these folks are hired. All these folks have put people on. We have seen a slow, we have, I mean, we had thousands, just hundreds coming through. We have seen a slow summer as we got to the, the new year. But, what you see there is, we've had a 7.3% drop in the county's unemployment rate, 68% drop in the number of planes, and 12,000 jobs added. It was since April, which again, left us with that, that difference of about another seven or eight thousand. But, these are all, just like we talked about, manufacturing, distribution, technology companies, companies can hire for remote work. They are not your folks on the retail side. They're not your folks in hospitality, or with a heavy customer service facing. So, just some major milestones from the EDC in 2020, the Glabberdy Brand project. I think that was a really good example of the type of cooperation that we want to see, I think that you all want to see amongst your partners. It's why you've got the mayors working together. It's why everybody encouraged us to work with the CVB and the Chamber and the, and the Arts Council to go into partnership. And I think we can do that around such an issue as potentially sensitive as your identity and storytelling. We should be able to do that about, just about anything. The, the PR initiative, that was a huge push for us, and we're going to continue it as long as we can afford to. It is not cheap to hire national PR folks to push our stories, but if we don't tell our story, who will? We developed a 10-point recovery plan. We talked about the SEED Network. We have a coworking space up on our floor for early-stage companies now. The process on the broadband, we have four projects set to announce, and we're very optimistic about. We pack Dancins all here in your area, in your MIA, the global network, the new spec building. If you haven't been by, I've got a little clip here in a moment that'll show you how far that has come. And I will say that we have shown that project to probably a half dozen, and the opportunity to grow, we could see easily, I know I came forward, Jay, when we talked about region, I said, this could be a million feet over there. We could easily see, I think eventually, close to 2 million square feet in that corridor. That'll be within, within your town limits within the next, obviously could, if the command continues forward. So, with the county's help, there was $2 million sewer grant. They came in there, eliminated, that eliminated Palm Station at Dirtbag Gales. That would have been possible too without the support of the PWC. They are funding a portion of that, and we've established a new Business Advisory Council. Let's see if I can get this to play. Yeah. Should have skipped all that last part and just let you watch this video here. This is very, and, and all the time. These are just some of the projects that have come through fruition over the last, we'll say, 24, 36 months. This is camera supersite. We've got another project looking at that right now. The Martin empty maiden form building with Dancins. This is where Booze Allen Hamilton is, has expanded their headquarters in our area, 250 jobs there. ENG, 60 jobs. I'm just off of Technology Drive. No, that's on Tom Starling Road, sorry. We pack, finally filling 100% of that 107 Tom Starling Western Publishing Building. They added $2.5 million and filled 250,000 square feet, making that building completely full. And here's Eclarts with 300. We have seen over the last three years, our industrial vacancy dropped by close to 60%, while also adding a million square feet of footage, and seeing the rental rates go up. So, that is the best prerogative of statistics. More are full, more is built, and, and people are paying a better price for it. Here's your new spec building. It's about two weeks old, and eventually, we can see up 750,000 per feet across the street, another 250,000 per feet, another building on the site. The sewer line will be running across the back. And so, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have. I'm going to skip these fun things here, and just wanted to say that we do have, I wanted to just give you an idea of where our sites are in the community. These are our existing sites, and you can see it's tough on this. Hope Mills, you've got quite a good swath, but what you have more of here, these are our sites. And I'm going to just jump ahead though, and I thought I had, and the stars though, the stars are where we've landed some, the gold stars. The blue is where we've shown things repeatedly. It's on your edge, but without a doubt, I think you can see that, I don't think you quite have 50% of all of it, but per capita, you've probably got four or five times more than anybody else. And we've been happy to be good partners with that and your team in this area. We weave in and out of the town limits and the county and the, and the city there. So, with that, we've got a lot of good things going. We, we just want to answer any questions you have. I wanted to share a little bit about what we're working on. Melissa, did I cover what we were hoping, or did I miss something there? Because it has been a, it's been a holiday, a borderline, borderline COVID case in my house. Apologize for your last meeting there. My little daughter had an exposure, and Daddy freaked out. I'm concerned about us on that. And, and a couple of weeks. So, I just wanted to make sure I covered everything, and I have to take any questions you have.
Okay. You want to have questions? Appreciate you coming and giving us this update, too.
I think you did a great job.
Well done, Robert.
Thank you.
Can Do.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and I will not put you on the spot, but I really do hope you'll be part of that conversation about blending into our storytelling, because we are paid to talk good about the community, and people, and it's true, that people are going to go, that's a sales guy. But, when you tell your story and you let us share that, that's entirely different. People believe that. That is real. That is vested. And anything we can do to work with you on that, to incorporate the Can Do Carolina concept into what you're doing here, just let us know.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Robert, can you send us your slides, please?
You have, I will send you links to the videos.
Okay.
And you have a PDF other than one or two small tweets. Jay hasn't chipped it out to you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And on coming up, sorry, Mayor, may I have 30 seconds?
Sure.
Just to say that you'll be joining us on the 5th. We'll meet with Elena Wall, the new CEO of PWC, and a number of utility providers. Jay Ryan, he asked me on his radio show today, says, what do you keep you up at night? And I gave him one answer. But, the other answer, the second part of that, if we had more time, was we say, we're doing a lot of the things, we fill these vacant buildings. We now have buildings going up on some of these sites we've always known about. The real question is, what's next and where's next? That's 295, because we look at utility capacity, and so that's where we're bringing those together. And that'll be a follow-up from the Mayor's Coalition. I'll get the acronym right. It's been a long Tuesday already. I apologize.
That's all right.
As your co-chair there. But, so that's pushing forward, and we'll be back with that conversation following with all of you, because we have to start identifying what comes next now that we've taken care of some of those things we have in practice.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have John W. Hodge's Public Safety Center update. Of course, we've all had our fun today.
Should I put my hat back on?
Shoveling some dirt.
I may have to buy a new one of those.
Okay. Just a quick update on the public safety building. What I plan to do going forward, now that construction's actually beginning, is each quarter, I will be bringing y'all an update on the progress of the project. If anything needs to be relayed outside of that, we'll do that as it becomes necessary. But, otherwise, you can expect a presentation, the second meeting of each month, each quarter. So, where we are right now, the loan closed, was approved by the local government commission on January 5th. This is a construction loan. The USDA had already been approved, but we have to have an interim financing for the construction loan. So, that was approved on January 5th. Y'all had already approved it. Prior to that, PNC Bank got it for $14,325,000. LGC approved it January 5th. We closed on the loan on January 7th. So, once that happened, we could sign the contract with the construction company and get things rolling. They're going to start mobilizing this week. You saw there's one piece of equipment out there now. They did move that bucket off the roof. That was just for show, for the groundbreaking. But, right now, the police station is scheduled to start being demolished on Tuesday of next week. So, if you want to watch that, I know the chief is probably going to be paying attention to that. But, right now, they're looking at Tuesday. Another thing, the trees that are in the area where the new building's going to be constructed, there are 15 trees that are going to have to be removed. They will be doing that either later this week or Monday of next week, or at least by Monday of next week. They will already be down and removed before they start tearing down the building. Again, Gleason Builders is the contractor that we have hired through this, this logo here on your hat. They will be using what was the detective's trailer for their construction trailer to save space on the construction site. We left that there and showed it to them last week to see if they wanted to use that to save space inside the construction zone. So, they will be using a portion of that building for their construction trailer. So, if you see people using it with the construction, that's what they're doing. We had our pre-con meeting last Thursday, the pre-construction meeting. So, we've met with the Stormwater folks for the regional area. We met with the inspectors here and the inspectors that are going to be reviewing the building, and then met with most of our folks here with the town that are going to be part of the project as it's being constructed, to make sure everybody's on the same page in what we're doing, who's doing what, who's approving this, how the invoices are going to be paid. Pretty much every question answered before we actually start. So, that was last- So that was last Thursday. They are going to start putting up some fencing. So the first fencing they're going to do is around the police station before they start demolishing. They're going to fence in the area. The walking track along Golf View and Rockfish will stay in use. They're going to put the fence up about five feet inside of the walking trail. The walking trail behind the fire station and police area, I don't know if initially they're going to fence that in, but at some point, that area is going to be closed off behind it. But the, along the road frontage, that will stay open for the entire project. That will not be changed in any way at this point. What else have I got? The original plan is for the building itself to be done in 18 months. The owner of the company, Mr. Charles Gleason himself, wants to do it in less time than that. He says about 13 or 14 months instead of 18. That's very aggressive, but they didn't put that, the official timeframe, because they do have to allow for weather. Sometimes there could be delays in some of the shipment. We still are in a pandemic. Sometimes materials are hard to get, so, but they really want to put themselves on an aggressive schedule. I'm fine with that if they finish early, but right now, the official schedule has the building itself done in 18 months. The total project, all phases, will be in two years. Because once the building is done, the fire station, the fire department has to move into the building and get completely out of their current building, then that building will be demolished. And then the final phase will be done, which will be the parking lot for the rear of the fire station and then the parking inside the fencing for the staff and employees of the fire department. So that's pretty much where we are right now. Are there any questions? And I appreciate y'all being at the groundbreaking. I thought that went very well.
Any questions?
I got a couple of things I'd like to find out. If we have a question, can we bring it up at any time?
You can bring up a question anytime you want. You can always email me. You can ask Melissa to check with me. Anything that you see on the site itself, just let me know. But as far as a planned update, we'll be doing that quarterly.
You going to put benches out front for people to sit and watch?
We had to move the bench that was out here by the entrance. But the Rockfish Road entrance, LA Priest, that will be the construction entrance for the project. I just thought of it now. Once the fencing goes up and they tear down the police station, probably sometime in early February, they will be moving the fencing to the entire construction site. So the parking lot on this side will not be used anymore and then LA Priest will actually be closed for the public. That'll probably be sometime in early February.
Madam Mayor, if there's no more questions, I'll make the motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 6 for the Capital Project Fund reflecting the construction bids for the project.
And I'll second it. Okay.
And it's about $2 million lower than the original budget.
Okay, I have a motion, second, all those in favor, seeing if I've raised your right hand? Seeing none opposed, and thank you for a great event today. And I would, I really do believe that we, the attention we got from the Congressman Hudson and Richard Burr's office and Senator Tillis's office and then Senator DeViere and Representative Zoka, that made the occasion even more special in that they came and recognized that this was a big event for Hope Mills.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all.
All righty, next we have public hearings and we'll start with continuation of case P-19-01. This was tabled at the last meeting. It's modification of an approved CP Plan Commercial CZ Conditional Zoning for a Motor Vehicle Sales District or to a more restrictive zoning district of 2.18 plus or minus acres located on the east side of North Carolina 59, west of Service Road, John Smith Road, north of North Carolina 162, and it's submitted by Eric and Carrie Brown owners and George M. Rowe's agent. And I will turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin. And this would be a public hearing that will open up for public comment after this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of the, this project being a continuation, I won't, I can pull the presentation up if you want, but if you recall, this was a case that was tabled at our last hearing. It was tabled at our last hearing and if you noticed in your packet, I have just what an update is. You guys had expressed interest in us getting that back rear piece off of John Smith annexed into the town. What I did dug into in terms of clarification, as you see here, I think Town Manager sent you guys an email as well. Because this is a conditional zoning and because the original conditional zoning included the site plan as a condition that was approved in 2019, and because this site is not in the town and it's not actually a part of this request, we technically don't have the authority to tie the annexation into the reconsideration of this. But however, I did reach out to the developer, just gentleman's request, to see if he'd be willing to voluntarily annex in. He did, he and I did go back and forth for a couple of days, but he did respectfully decline. It was primarily tied to taxes. I did let him know that it would just be an increase in commercial taxes based on the small script footage of that rear piece. I don't think he was too concerned with having to put in the privacy fence, but that tax issue was something that he didn't, he basically just candidly told me that it wasn't something that he would be interested in. So I didn't have the authority or I was not successfully able to get him to submit an annexation petition for that rear piece. So it's back under consideration for the conditional zoning modification for the three pieces that are off of Hope Mills Road.
Do we have any board member that has a question or reference to this?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. And that's Mr. Legg.
Is he in any way, shape, or form going to be in any violation for using that property as part of his business property?
No.
Okay.
Any other comment or question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's unfortunate, Chance, sir. This leaves us with a donut hole. Truly does. Could this have been worked a different way on the front end, knowing that all of these properties were zone conditional?
Yes and no. Only thing that I think that we could have done is asked him initially upfront.
Initially, that's exactly right.
We never had the authority to make this a binding aspect of it because of two things. The request does not include this piece. The request is before you is only including the three parts that's off of Hope Mills Road. Second, because it was initially submitted as an additional zoning, that means that the only time that we could have actually done anything is if it was something that was mutually agreed upon. That would have been the case in 2019. So at that time, we could have made the same request, but we would have not been in any position to be, to have a position to force him to do that. He still would have had the authority to say no. So I get that you could probably see what we could have done in 2019, but nothing that happened with the way it was filed would have changed the authority that we currently have.
But he's using that piece, is he not?
He has the right to use that piece. What we don't have to do, the right to do, is to make that rear piece that is not a request for rezoning. We cannot tie that legally to a desire to annex in this piece of property. The only thing that's under consideration for you tonight are the three properties off of Hope Mills Road. So when he filed that as a conditional zoning, there were two things that prevented us from doing what you're talking about. One, the three pieces of property are the only pieces that we have the authority to consider. And because it's conditional zoning, if he did not mutually agree to add that piece in as an annexation, we don't have the authority to do that. And that would have been the case in 2019, had we actually attempted to make this request at that point.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I may have another one, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Legg.
I don't think we should be able to tell our residents what to do with their property and when to do it. But as long as they're in compliance with all the rules, then I don't see that we got a, we got a problem.
That's my position.
I mean, I realize they're going to do some donut holes and we're having trouble getting some of those closed up now. But if they're not in violation, there's not, nothing we can do.
The majority of, I would say 100% of all the annexations that I have dealt with have all been negotiations. The state does not allow us to do mandatory annexations without the legislature. But in the event where we have a piece of property where it's kind of on the fence, whether they need to or not, I have had success just having conversations with, just conveying the benefits of being in town limits. Even with this guy, I did counter with him in terms of his concern about taxes, the fact that he would have in-town water rates and things of that nature. But that's just a negotiation. I did, I'd never had the authority with the way this was filed. Like I said, even in 2019, we never had the authority to require him to do this. But with the conversation that we had at the last board meeting with table in it, I wanted to make sure legally that I was very clear on what we did have the authority to do and what we don't. But I also did want to reach out to the guy to see if he'd be willing to do it. But at that point, it's just whether or not he has the desire to, but we did not have the authority to force that.
But, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, and that piece of property is going to be for additional exit?
Yes.
Is it also going to be, is because he has resized his building, does that mean that changes the requirements for parking? Because he's losing parking by resizing the building?
The modification was tied to him increasing the size of the building and shifting the building, but it did not increase in size to the point where it created an additional need for parking space and it not, the shift did not alter the site plan. It altered the site plan to the point where he had to come back in and get an approval, but not to the point where it took him out of compliance with any zoning regulations.
Do you have another comment, Commissioner Legg?
If they should have a fire or something there, we have to service that call, correct? Now, I'm not talking about on the building itself, I'm talking about on the acreage in the back.
That's a fire conversation. I know we have closest dispatch, but I would anticipate where that is. I think we'd probably get back off.
Commissioner Marley?
What happens if the board doesn't approve it?
You would have to instruct me or the board would have to very carefully craft language that would explain why this is not in compliance with the Southwest Plan, which it is. Why this is not in the public good, which it is. So what happens is when you look at this motion on the second page of my staff report, this motion is tied to things and milestones that the Southwest Plan and our 2030 Growth Plan list as things that a project has to have in order for it to be approved. So if we're looking at the heavy commercial designation, we're talking about reasonable and in the public interest as conditional zoning, being in harmony with the surrounding existing uses. If you're going against this recommendation, you would have to cite that this is in compliance with the Southwest Plan. However, you're denying it because of X, Y, and Z.
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
I'll kind of tie this in with another item on the agenda. So he's wanting to use that back part as a secondary entrance coming out of, from that neighborhood.
Correct.
So we got an item on the agenda tonight where we're discussing the same problem with, he's going to be using the neighborhood, which is going to be increasing that traffic. He's going to be bringing cars in there, trucks in and out there. I know we're going to start getting complaints from everybody else back there, just like we're getting complaints now. We're fixing to have a list of complaints from citizens in the town about another project. This is going to be the same thing. I agree, I wasn't on the board in 2019, I agree with Commissioner Belfour's. I wish we'd have caught this on the front end so we could have done a little bit more about it. But to be honest with you, truthfully, I'm not in favor of it. Because I feel like it's going to come back on us. We approved this. He puts a second entrance in, he's going to be bringing trucks with cars on them, commercial vehicle traffic through that neighborhood. Those roads back there aren't designed to hold 18-wheelers and car trailers and people in and out of there. I just, I just feel like we're creating a problem for ourselves.
What I would reply to that, and it's very similar to the same case you're talking about in the other case. If you notice, everything I've said from day one is exactly the same. My charge is for the compliance with zoning regulations. The zoning regulations that give me the authority does not give me the authority to deny a case for access. It does not give me the authority, whether it's talking about the old case or this one. When I'm looking at this case, my charge is, is this in compliance with the underlying zoning? And are these conditions in compliance with our regulations? That's the only charge I have. I think it's the pleasure of the board on how you see fit, because this is a recommendation from the planning board. But from my position, I can only look at this for whether it is or is not in compliance with the zoning regulations. And both of those cases, this case and the other one you're talking about, from a zoning standpoint, they are both in full compliance with our regulations. If you, and I'll even add, if you are not, you couldn't even file the application. You could not file an application that is not in compliance with the underlying zoning. So it's a catch 22 by the time we get it up here, because I don't have the authority to deny this project to be considered by you guys from what I'm seeing. You have the authority to deny it, whether it's a recommendation of approval from the planning board or not. I'm just simply saying that the recommendations that we give are based on milestones that are outlined in our Southwest Plan. That doesn't mean you're required to do that. I'm just saying if you are going to go in the opposite direction legally, and I think Dan can chime in on this as well, how you craft the denial language is very crucial as it relates to the general statutes that govern our comprehensive plans.
Well, don't you believe that it will not be in harmony with the existing uses? Now, the only thing that I, I look at this as, we're looking at, because the way it was submitted, they conveniently left off the lot in their original presentation. In other words, the lot that they're going to be using. So they're, we're just looking at the three lots. And on either side of it, yes, it's commercial. Directly behind it, it's residential. And that one lot that they're going to use as another, they would only have one entrance based on their current plan. They've got to have that second entrance, right, or the exit?
Um, I'm not sure if they have to have it versus whether or not they would desire to have it. But what I would say in terms of answering the harmony with surrounding areas, you have another auto body shop just north of this. Just south of this is a shopping center that includes about seven different retail businesses in Biscaville. On the back end is what you're talking about, where the makeup of the area along John Smith Road is residential. I would argue that he's not developing that rear piece with the residential use. He's not even rezoning it from residential. But that would be the answer to why I think the planning board and myself recommends approval based on the harmony of the surrounding area. I get what you guys are talking about and I'm not in dispute of that. I'm just saying if we're just talking about zoning and I'm looking at this area, this is a pretty well-established commercial corridor, so I can't, from my understanding and applicability of the zoning regulations, I can't in good conscience say this is not in harmony. Now, if this was a car dealership in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I think it's a lot easier to make that argument. But this rear piece that's not in the town, that's not a part of this request and not being requested to be rezoned to commercial, I don't know if I can make that argument. But I get the position you're coming from.
Any other questions?
Yes, that definitely, definitely.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Definitely. It's definitely at the discretion of the board to make either decision.
I don't think it's reasonable and I don't think it's in the public interest to approve this request. And I say that because of some of the comments that's already been made about that rear part. I also say that because I've got a concern about first responders and one entrance and exit only into these three lots. So I don't know how this could be reasonable, and I don't know how it's in the public interest when that lot is going to be used, and it's going to be used heavily. And it's going to disturb the, uh, the neighborhoods around these three lots, because there's not going to be any buffer fence at all put up. So no, that's how I feel, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Madam Mayor, i- if, what Mr. McLaughlin is telling us, I don't know why we have this on the agenda. We don't really have a decision to make. It's already been approved once before.
Um, what I, what I would clarify with that, it was approved before in 2019, but they made a change to the site plan that triggered a requirement to be reconsidered by the board for this change. That's why it's on the agenda, um, tonight.
Let me ask you this, does it change the whole picture of the thing? Does it, the whole project got to come back for approval?
If you, there's a certain threshold on all conditional site plans of changes you can make. Let's say that they were just, um, removing a few parking spaces, or the change was just very minor. Then that's something that we would typically approve at an administrative level. But with the increase in the square footage of the building and shifting the building, we felt that that crossed the threshold of changes that you could make administratively. That's why it's back on the agenda as a modification, and that's why the board has to reconsider the case. But as, uh, the town attorney stated, it's at the discretion of the board, whichever, because what, what you have from staff in the county is just a recommendation. We, nobody's approved it, that's what your charge is. If you feel strongly that this is not in the public good, and if you feel strongly that this shouldn't be approved, that is actually, um, the desire of the board. These are just recommendations, um, that you have in your staff report.
Well, do we need to open the floor to see if there's anyone here that wants to speak?
That's correct, it's a public hearing.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this, uh, change, this conditional zoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We're going to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, and at this time, do we have any other discretion or request for information from any of our commissioners?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As long as you know, I don't like traffic being thrown into, to private neighborhoods. Especially commercial traffic, I'm going to call it, because it's a business. Uh, it's bad enough when we get residential traffic from one neighborhood to the other. But now we're talking about, as Mr. Marley or Mel, Bellflower said, semis and heavy trucks going through residential areas that the roads may not be built for that. So if it's appropriate, I'm going to make a motion, we deny it.
So you have to, um, use the recommendation, uh, the motion that we have, have to be adapted to a denial. And that motion, uh...
Second page of the staff report, in your packet.
Mayor.
Yeah, basically, just read it and...
Yeah, I was going to ask Mayor if I could, and...
Let me...
Appreciate it, sir.
Well, if you don't, can, can the attorney kind of walk us through this word, reword? Because the only thing we have is the motion to approve.
Yeah, I can do that too, I mean...
Can you do that?
Yeah. Let me read it, and then you repeat after me, if that's legal.
That's, well, assuming that this is, that the board does find that approval is not reasonable and not in public interest, that would be the language?
Yes. Yeah, so just everywhere you see that the board, it says the board does approve, you just basically say that...
Disapprove.
Vote to deny the initial zoning request, uh, not, not this, but, uh, vote to deny the modification or the conditional zoning. Um, you'd also vote that it's not in the public good and things of that nature. So read it and just...
Let me try to read that.
Okay.
If I, if I mess up, stop me, correct me. Mayor, can I?
Sure.
Um, in case P nineteen dash O one, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners votes to disapprove the modification request to an approved CP slash CZ conditional zoning for motor vehicle sales, and find the modification request inconsistent, is that right?
Well, there's a, I think there's a difference between whether you find it inconsistent with the land use plan and whether you find it reasonable and in public interest.
Okay, so we find it consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan designation of heavy commercial as it provides for the shopping needs of the immediate neighborhood.
This part you probably wouldn't need to read, because that language is...
It's germane to the heavy commercial designation.
So we skip to where?
Approval of the modification is not...
Okay, approval of the modification request is unreasonable in the public interest as the conditional zoning district is not, would you say is not in harmony?
I think, I think you actually need to say approval of the modification request is not reasonable and not in public interest.
Yeah.
Is not reasonable and not in the public interest as the condition, do I need to read the rest of that?
As the conditional zoning is not in harmony with surrounding...
As the conditional zoning district is not in harmony with the surrounding existing uses and zoning and the modification...
Just stop, yeah, stop right there.
Okay. That was painful, I know. We got it done.
All right, we have a motion. And that motion is, in case P nineteen dash O one, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners votes to disapprove the modification request to approve CP CZ conditional zoning for motor vehicle sales, and find the modification request is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan designation of heavy commercial. Um, but approval of the, the modification request is unreasonable and not in public interest as the conditional zoning district is not in harmony with surrounding existing uses.
And are there any other reasons that you would like to articulate as to why you don't believe it is in the public interest?
I mean, I'll go with the same, just like we discussed. I mean, you're, you're looking at, you know, dumping commercial traffic into a residential neighborhood. The streets weren't designed to hold that, uh, traffic load, or the weight of those trucks coming in and out, in my opinion. So, I mean, that would be one reason, if anybody's got anything else.
You would like to amend the motion to add the language that it is not in the public interest that the increase in traffic, uh, would, would not be in public interest?
I accept that amendment.
Okay.
I'll go with that.
We have a motion with amendment of that the increased public traffic would, the increase in traffic would not be in public interest. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Marley, a second by Mayor Protem. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. All right.
Man, that was painful.
That was painful.
Appreciate it, uh, appreciate it, and I, can I say one thing? Uh, I, I appreciate your comments too, Mayor. You, you're doing your job, and you bring us the recommendation and...
I, I'm not going anywhere though, I got the next five.
I'm not.
Here we go.
We'll, we'll try to be better.
This is case P twenty dash fifty-four, initial zoning of three point six four plus or minus acres to C two planned service and retail districts, CZ conditional zoning for trades contractor activities or to a more restrictive zoning district. It's located on the northwest side of Service Road twelve forty-three, which is US Highway three oh one South, northeast of Brooklyn Circle, and it's submitted by DSI Properties LLC owner. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Um, as stated, this is, um, case P twenty dash fifty-four, its initial zoning request. I'll try to make this quick, because these, these next three cases are tied to annexations that you already approved. This is just the tail end of the process where we're designating the zoning. Um, the annexation petition was received, uh, from DSI Properties, approved on October fifth under ordinance A two oh two oh dash oh eight. It's currently a vacant property, previously approved under the C two P slash CZ district in the county. Um, this is tied to the expansion of DSI. They have an existing facility, they had a vacant lot next door. The existing facility was already approved, uh, C two P CZ. This vacant piece, it triggered annexation, so we're just initially zoning it to the same piece, uh, that's identical to their other property. Um, we're working with the developer for, um, through, uh, plan review for construction plans. Um, we don't have any issues with the project.
And the current DSI is in Hope Mills?
No, the current D, I, I can't explain to you what happened with the current DSI and when they were, um, built, but this new project, um, triggered the annexation agreement. I don't know when the previous one was, or it should have, I can't really speak to that.
So what happens with, is that not an issue with that piece being in Hope Mills and this, in other words...
It, it was an issue for him, um, because he didn't want to pay the taxes to come into the town. But again, um, the only thing that was before me was this piece, it was an expansion, it needed water and sewer. It triggered the PWC agreement.
So does he have water and sewer on his current piece of property?
I think he does. So that, I can't speak to, that existing development is pretty old, I'm not sure. Now, I know the PWC agreement is older, but again, um, I think DSI was here well before I came on board. Um, but I can just tell you what happened with this particular project. Um, the only tie that we have to the previous one is why we're choosing C two P slash CZ for the initial zoning, because that's what the existing zoning is of the other piece.
So we, this is a donut hole with a...
I, I will say initially, this is in an area that, I guess, six years ago, maybe there wasn't an interest. But this part of Hope Mills, going towards three oh one, crossing, um, ninety-five, going over the Chicken Foot, that is an area that was experiencing a, a significant amount of growth. That was one of the arguments that the, uh, developer had. Um, I told him that I can't speak to why the previous one wasn't, maybe there wasn't an interest in that area. But with all the stuff we have coming over there now, um, that's definitely something that we're interested in pursuing. And again, just to make sure you're aware, we've already annexed this. Right now, we're just considering the proper zoning classification to designate it under the initial zoning process. The annexation was approved on the fifth of October. I have the site plan as well. This is your, um, land use. This is another area that shows some of the zoning. This is your hydro and hydro conclusion sewers. This is your heavy commercial, um, we're basically compliant with the land use designation. And this is your site plan.
Questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we need to start looking at these annexations a little closer than we already do.
I will come back to say that I don't, I think we look at the annexations now like we should have. I'll leave it at that. But I think with our plan review team, we look at annexations at a level that we've never seen. And when we do that, you're starting to unearth some very interesting things that took place before, uh, we came on board. But I, again, I can't speak to that. The only thing I can speak to is, um, how aggressive we are with making sure that these things don't slip through the cracks, um, today.
I am interested in bringing more into the Hope Mills City Limits. But I don't want to do that while creating donut holes. That's going to be harder to close up at a later date, because those donut holes doesn't do us any good.
Well, I would say, and, and I understand that the, the board's, um, concerned with donut holes, but I want to make sure that we're just having the conversation in proper context. We should be actually cleaning up the donut holes by annexing in. As more development comes in, that's what we should be doing. The donut holes were created because in the past, I think you had developments coming that were not annexed in for some odd reason. But, um, just from an economic development standpoint, we have a amazingly aggressive amount of development coming to this town. About seventy percent of it is in our MIA. Um, if you recall, when we had the donut hole initiative a few years ago, one of the main things that came out of our plan review staff is that if we do nothing, the market will drive the annexations to us. That's exactly what's happening. So I think we should be a little cautious in terms of us noticing the fruition of the annexations coming in from our MIA and now saying, maybe we don't want to do that. This is an area along three oh one, it's not that many vacant lots left for development, but just like developers will have the argument sidewalks to nowhere, it would probably look that way for one project. When another project comes next door, they have to tie in. When another project comes next door, they have to tie in. So what I don't want to happen is, we say no to this project, and a major development comes another year from now, and we have created a donut hole because we said no. Again, this is a project that's already been annexed. So what we could potentially be doing now, if we said no, this project remains unzoned at that point. And at that point, they can do anything on the property. Um, I do think that's one of the main reasons why, when we do these annexations, we do them with memos from our plan review staff to let you guys know, we have actually looked at this. Um, this developer we talked to extensively, um, before he even submitted his annexation petition. So, um, what we're dealing with is trying our best to ensure that the PWC agreement is followed. Um, and again, we do see some pretty interesting things when we start going to some of these areas where we have, uh, existing phases of development that was not annexed in. Current phases, they have to be annexed in. We can't speak to what happened ten, fifteen years ago, but I do not think we should, or at least my recommendation, is that we shouldn't push away from annexation because of something that is a little bit more difficult to fix that happened, uh, ten, eleven years ago. But that's just my take on it.
You spoke about the donut, previous donut holes. A former staff member told us it would cost between two and three million dollars to bring these other places up to water and sewer?
That is correct.
To make them, uh, eligible for annexation without...
And that's a very key point, because if we do forced annexation, which is the main reason why, um, some of our board, uh, our plan review team said, if we don't do the forced annexation and we let development come naturally, they're required to put the water and sewer on their end when they apply for PWC. If we do a donut hole, we have a ten-year window to require, to actually provide water and sewer on our dime to all the properties that we annex in, which is why we shouldn't do forced annexation. Every one of these properties that do come in, piece by piece, they are required to extend water and sewer to their site on their end. We're just required to ensure that they do two things, the full annexation and the compliance of our zoning regulations. Because what's going to happen is if, in these areas that are our MIA and they're expanding, especially across, um, two, um, on ninety-five to Chicken Foot, the general public doesn't know that this is Hope Mills and this is not. They don't know it's an MIA in town limits, they know they live in Hope Mills. What we're desperately trying to do as staff is to get these projects under our jurisdiction, because we know what's going to happen if it's not. And if it's not developed under our jurisdiction, that's not going to remove the mentality of the general public that this is Hope Mills or not. It's just going to create a substandard development. So that's something I think we should weigh in. Um, one of the reasons why we're so aggressive, because if we can get it under our jurisdiction, we can ensure that the DOT standards are met in terms of the roadway design. We can ensure stormwater is being done properly and things of that nature. But again, I want to make sure the board understands that this is not us asking you to annex in a property. This is a property that was already annexed in, and we're just trying to designate it to the, uh, best suitable zoning classification.
It's a front-end motion, that's what it is.
It's a front-end motion, is what it is.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, do we have, at this time, on a open the public hearing? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this zoning change? Initial zoning? Is there anyone that would like to speak against this?
Motion to close public hearing.
Close public hearing at this time? And I guess the only question, and through all that conversation, was just how did they manage to get water and sewer to the initial piece of property in which we have nothing, that we can do anything about that? And they're taking care of the new piece of property? So I guess now would be a time for action, does?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and he's, he actually has it with your packet?
Madam Mayor, case number P twenty fifty-four, the town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners vote to approve the initial zoning request, C two P, Plan Service and Retail District, CZ, conditional zoning for trades, contractor activities, and find this request consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan twenty thirteen designation of heavy commercial as the subject property meets the location criteria for heavy commercial as defined in the Land Use Policies Plan two thousand nine, and the plan supports strip commercial areas along US Highway three oh one. Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest as the district requested is in harmony with surrounding existing land uses. And the permitted use serves as a transition between existing commercial uses and established residential areas.
Have a motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, thank you. Next, we have case P twenty dash fifty-five, initial zoning of fifteen point six five plus or minus acres to R seven five set residential to a more restrictive zoning district located on the west side of Service Road one eleven nineteen, Muscat Road, and south of Fairhaven Trail, and it's submitted by GRRF LLC owner. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Again, this is another initial zoning case, the petition was received by staff from Larry King Associates. This is tied, this is another interesting, this is tied to phase five of the existing Sheffield Farms development, of which the first four phases was not annexed into the town. This current phase is fifteen point six five acres of land. The annexation was approved under ordinance A two oh two oh dash oh nine on October nineteenth. Staff is working with the developers right now, I think they are under construction. But we're working with them to ensure compliance with DOT roadway regulations as it pertains to streets. Our Public Works Department is working with them, but we are having conversations. This is the zoning, or a map that shows you the subject property outlined or hashtagged. This is the phase five. If you notice, the area just south of that hashtag area, that's the phase six that will probably come in at a future date. One thing that made this pretty attractive to us is this is in that area of the study area we're doing for the proposed loop. They were doing the economic development study in that area. Again, I can't speak to what happened, I think Sheffield Farms was built like fifteen years ago. But the first four phases were not annexed in. This phase was triggered because they're expanding it, they need water and sewer in this new phase. This is your land use map showing that basically everything in the first four is single-family. This is another aerial showing the land use. These are hydroic soils and hydroic inclusion soils, water and sewer is available to the subject property. This is your Southwest Plan Compliance, it is in compliance with the low-density residential land use designation. And here are some of your site photographs. This is kind of an indication of what the housing stock will look like as well. And again, our staff recommendation for this initial zoning to R seven five is for approval. Planning Board recommended approval on December fifteenth. Open up the floor, any questions that you may have?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
How many entrances, exits do they have?
There are about, I don't know if they have the site plan in here.
I didn't see it on here.
Look there, there are two stub outs that provide access to this property that basically indicates to us that these, this was intended to be phased in. So I don't think we'd have the issue, actually, it's a third stub out as well, if you look here.
Three of them.
Yeah.
There's another one here in this area, well, you can't see my mouse, but there's actually three giving access directly to the property. And there's another stub out just south of that, that in my opinion is probably the stub out for the future phase. I have the overall design, I started digging into that one when I got this request. So I have the layout of the entire subdivision. So I do know that their future phase will tie in. But with respect to the entrances and the fire requirement that requires sprinklers, if you don't have two entrances, I do think they shouldn't have any problems with that, based on what I'm reviewing. But again, it was annexed in on October nineteenth, staff is in communication with the developers.
Does it look like it didn't have much of an option as far as entrance, exits concerned?
Well, I think they laid out the whole, the entire design from the beginning, at least what I have is the whole design. So I think it was meant to provide access off of Muscat and some of those other roadways. But if you notice, that long, solid white line to the north, that's a railroad track, so they don't have the, yeah, they don't have the
On my computer.
Option of coming in from that side. And I think the property touches Brissom Road south of this, or it feeds into that area. So that's where I think phase six would be, and that's right in the heart of that, that, the study area that we're doing. So that's one of the reasons why we were kind of interested in annexing this piece.
Questions?
That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
I think the only question I would have is just making sure that because they've already, it's already got the established neighborhoods and their streets that they've created by, I guess, their standards, that whether or not they've been inspected. So that where we're picking up will be at the stub.
Yes.
So that's gonna be the other thing is
It's gonna get even more interesting.
Whether phase one, two, three, and four understands that they're not
That's a conversation we're having, because the main thing that's gonna trigger the phone calls, you guys, is trash pickup. The first four phases won't have it, the last two phases will. But this is the main reason why we are so aggressive with developers. Because the developer for phase one through four is not here. Well, he's here, but he's not the one that's gonna have to answer those questions.
Right.
We are. And so that's why if it appears that we have a pretty aggressive stance on these decisions now, this is why. Because it has to end somewhere where we take a position that you're gonna have to annex this in. We can't fix what happened in the past, but from this point forward, this is how we have to move. And again, if we don't annex it, it's gonna be developed in an area that is considered Hope Mills, but we don't have a watchful eye over it, or the authority to actually require it to be done properly.
The way, I know we're not talking about annexation, but the way the laws are now, I mean, this is the only way the town's gonna grow.
That's the only way.
Right now, the only way.
I will tell you, like I said before, I'm, I may have to put a tracker in just to track the annexations. Because I have three initial zonings on this agenda tonight, I have four people calling right now for additional properties that will result in annexation. I think in the year twenty twenty, we hit a record number of annexations. And all of them are all in our MIA, and it's in areas that we have been salivating for development for. So again, our push is always to get it under our jurisdiction so we can make sure that the quality of development is maintained.
At this time, we'll, again, a public hearing in reference to this property. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in opposition?
Motion to close public hearing, and I'll make the other motion.
Okay, alrighty. Any other discussion? Commissioner Marley will make the motion.
In case number P twenty dash fifty-five, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners vote to approve the initial zoning request to R seven point five residential and finds the request consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan designation of low-density residential as it allows a density of two point two to six units per acre and only allows stick-built houses which are permitted uses in R seven point five district. Approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest as the district requested is in harmony with the surrounding existing land uses and zoning, and the parcels have access to public water and sewer.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, thank you very much. Next, we have case P twenty dash fifty-six. Initial zoning of three point seven four acres to CP Plan Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located on the west side of Service Road eleven thirty-two, which is Legion Road, south of Service Road thirty-three oh one, Island Drive. It's submitted by Washaroo Laundromat Incorporated and Raymond E. Nicholson Jr. Owners. And I'll turn this one over to Mr. McLaughlin.
This one is a unique one. This is actually the initial zoning of three parcels that were achieved through two separate annexations. Reason why the county did it is you'll see in a minute when I read this email, all three are contiguous. So they just basically didn't want to have two separate initial zoners for pieces that are beside each other. They're going to the same classification, but you'll see why they're linked. We received an annexation petition from a developer tied to the proposed Washaroo Laundromat. It was approved in the county in our MIA initially. As a result of the subdivision of the parcel created for the Washaroo piece, two additional parcels remain that had to be annexed to the town because the water and sewer that gives access to the Washaroo had to go through those two lots. So they had a bigger lot that actually fronted on Island and Legion. And when they carved out the piece for the Washaroo piece, the bigger piece left had to be annexed in too. So they did that under two separate annexations. They were approved by the board on September twenty-first, annexation two oh two oh dash oh five and two oh two oh dash oh six. All three parcels have a combined size of three point seven four acres. And they processed this under one initial zoning case, that's the only reason why you have three. But this is, if you notice, in the hashed area, the Washaroo piece is the piece this here. So this was the original lot. When they carved out this piece, because water and sewer was coming from here, they had to annex in those two pieces as well. Now, that was something that the developer was not pleased with, because he said, well, I'm not developing that. Yes, but water and sewer is being made available to it. If you notice, if you know where this is, this is Island and Legion, it's that gas station. That's that island that has been out there forever as Hope Mills Limits. But as I spoke about the three oh one piece, what is coming beside it? It's a continuous annexation. I'm getting some calls about this area on Legion down, slowly starting to gain some interest. So what will happen is, right now, looks like it's an island, but that island is growing. And as the time develops, we're slowly gonna see the expansion of our limits from south of this to this location. But that's the reason why I put in my staff report that they took two annexations that you guys did in September and just combined them to one initial zoning request, because both of them are requesting the CP district and it's tied to two properties that are contiguous.
Alright, any questions?
There is no development on the other two pieces. The Washaroo site plan should be, no, it's not in here. But again, this is just the initial zoning to designate this as CP. We are working with the Washaroo developers as well. They had some stormwater issues that they had to run through, so we've had several sketch plan meetings. I think to date, they have actually had their zoning approval, but I do not know if they've received their building permit. But they actually are actively meeting with our plan review team.
I have a question again.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm talking every night. Chancellor, if I owned a lot up the street from that, and I wanted to annex it, could I tie onto that water coming across that lot?
The only time we would have, the only time we would have any interest or any control over that is if you're in our MIA first, first off.
It's in the MIA, isn't it?
This is, if you're talking about going north and then that, because this is the limits of our MIA. So what I'm getting at is, as long as you're in our MIA, if you want to actually extend water and sewer, I mean, you can. If you're not in, if you're not in our limits, it's just gonna trigger the annexation. But we don't determine if you can or can't extend water and sewer, that's PWC's position. So you would request a connection to that water and sewer from PWC. And when you make that request, it triggers the annexation agreement for you to come in to voluntarily petition to us.
Okay, this is also a public hearing?
Yes.
So is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Hearing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
A motion if you'd like.
Alright, and then I'll, Commissioner Marley, if you'll make that motion?
In case P twenty dash fifty-six, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners vote to the, vote to the initial zoning request to CP Plan Commercial and finds, A, the approval is an amendment to the adopted current Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan map and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. B, the following change in conditions was considered in amending the zoning ordinance to meet the development needs of the community. The subject properties meet the location criteria for heavy commercial as defined in the Land Use Policies Plan, including access to public water and sewer. And C, approval of the initial zoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with adjacent zoning and land uses.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, thank you, sir? Alrighty, we're now down to public comments. And I will remind everyone, because we do have quite a few this evening, each speaker is asked to limit comments to three minutes. The total comment period should be thirty minutes. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. And the comments be directed to the full board, not individual board members or staff members. And although we're interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect board action or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the public comments section. Topics requiring further investigation, we refer to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And at this time, I have I guess I'll call the name if they're here, or is there any, there are some here, so I'm assuming we've got some in person?
Yes, Mayor, the typed names are ones I received a written comment from. And I believe the third group, Mr. or Mrs. Caldwell, one of them are here in person. And then the handwritten two people at the bottom are here in person.
Okay.
Or were here, I believe Mr. McGeeche left.
Okay, would you want to do the ones that are here in person first, and then we'll read those that you have?
Yes, if that's the will of the board.
Would that be fine with the board, that we start with the ones who are in person? Because it has been a long wait for them. And then we'll read the rest into the, into the minutes.
Okay.
Alright, is Marion and, or Herschel Caldwell here? Okay, if you'll come to the podium and identify yourself and your address, and then we'll be glad to hear you.
My name is Marion Caldwell, and my address is three-six-zero-nine Suchek Drive, Hope Mills, which is in the general vicinity of what we're talking about with this road closure. And I wrote this letter to most people on the board. I'm not sure if everyone got it or not, some of the emails came back. But if you don't mind, I'll just read it so that my feelings are all on here. This is the second time I've been up here about this, but I understand it's been postponed several times, and it started months and months ago. What I'd like to say is please make the decision to close Crampton Road as soon as possible. For those who agree with this, thank you, and I know there's two members on the board who do agree with this. For the ones who are against this decision, if you haven't already driven to the area and looked around, please do so. Observations sometimes help you understand what is going on here. This would impact, opening this road would impact surrounding homes and making living there challenger, challenging at best. If you still believe that roads should be open to congestion, inconvenience, and even dangerous conditions, then make the decision to provide as many speed bumps as possible on Crenshaw, Suchek, and more on Crampton Roads to divert the people who are trying to use that to go ahead and use the road that they will have access to on Golf View Drive. The fact that this is causing some people to put their homes up for sale demonstrates how our neighbors feel about the situation. A lot of us like living here, and moving is not an immediate option, and we recognize that property values possibly could go down as finding new buyers might be difficult when the obvious unnecessary road is built. This situation should never have come about in the first place when permission was given to build more unnecessary units in the area. Much better use of the land could be made for the good of this town, which is supposed to be family-friendly.
Thank you. And, and just to respond to two things, this board has not said that they're against closing the road at all. There's not been a vote taken other than to postpone a decision. And the other thing is that the importance right now is for us to get to the point that we can make a good decision, and that's where we're working through that. But I did want to just let you know that, you know, we're not, we've not said that that's the goal of this board, to close the road. Next, we have Julia Warfel.
Good evening, mayors and Hope Mills Commissioners. I'm Julia Warfel, and I live at thirty-five-oh-nine Crampton Road. I came tonight to address the issue to close Crampton Road as the main entrance into the Par Four development and any other developments that may come along in the future. Our wonderful neighborhoods, Golf Acres and Brightmore, that surrounds the top-notch elementary school, known as Rockfish Elementary, would love to remain just that, a wonderful neighborhood in Hope Mills to live. I believe that the residents have been very patient, waiting for a response from the developers' meeting. The Greenway Committee or any other committees, we are waiting on. The Crampton Road Par Four Village process has gone on far too long since March twenty-twenty. It needs to come to an end. Don't you all think so? I have come and voiced my thoughts on this issue several times at the Board of Commissioners meetings. My fears of a huge increase in traffic coming down Crampton Road to a one-hundred-and-fourteen huge unit apartment complex. I have grandchildren I keep at my home, and they play in the front yard, they ride bikes down the street. This will all end if you all, the mayors and town commissioners, do not vote to close Crampton Road or push forward to engage the developers and everyone, anyone else involved to move their entrance to Golf View Road. I have reviewed all the posts, the past Board of Commissioner meetings, and the one that haunts me the most is the meeting on August the seventeenth, twenty-twenty. On the timeline of approximately two-thirty-four, discussion started. That was fine, but then at approximately twelve-thirty timeline on that August seventeenth meeting, from Commissioner Brian Marley, he told us how horrible it was when the apartment building was built right across his street from his house. Cars from the apartment dumped out in front of his house morning, noon, and night. When his son was little, he couldn't let his son play in the front yard because people would drive through his yard to cut off the stop sign so they wouldn't have to stop. To me, that is what will happen to the residents on Crampton. Next Commissioner, Jerry Legg, spoke up, told about his once-nice neighborhood and the opening of his dead-end street. It was opened. What happened to him? More trash, cars running stop signs, grandkids didn't even come over to his house because it was not safe. Now, I believe Mr. Legg and Mr. Bellflowers definitely hear the residents, they hear me, in our neighborhoods. They have voted twice to close Crampton Road. We thank you. What I don't understand is why Mr. Marley, who has lived in the nightmare, will not help us out and vote with us, or Mr. or Mrs. Edwards, who said at the same meeting on August the seventeenth, "Just let the board, the developers, DOT, etc., give them a chance." Well, here we are, five months later. Now, from that meeting, come March, it will have been a year that all of this issue came and was disclosed to the residents on Crampton Road. Now, to a side note to that, Mr. Marley, I was so proud of you for standing up for that other neighborhood that was gonna come in to this other business. I wish you would do that for us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. One thing, too, I was, I think we need to clarify, because I don't think that everyone understands, a site plan has not been approved for Par Four. There's nothing been approved for anything as far as the development goes, until that actually takes place and they put a site plan on the agenda, and that's what we're waiting for, is for a site plan that is changed from the original one. The original one they put out there, they pulled it off so they could negotiate with the other developer, and that's where we are, waiting for that to, the two groups, because there's another thirty-acre piece of property that is, is connected to those twenty, before you ever get to the town's ninety acres. So that's why the goal is a driveway on Golf View. That's what the town is wanting, and we want them to be able to bring that back to us. So there's nothing's been approved. There's no approval. So what you're waiting for right now is, long-term, in reference to before you'd see any kind of development anyway, we're, we're gotta work through this, so there's no panic right now until we actually get this brought to the board as a site plan, and those site plans likewise do not have to be approved, as you've seen tonight. There's a process we gotta go through because we, people own property and they present and they follow these steps for this to be, for approvals. So I'm speaking for the board. This board has only done what they thought was best as far as waiting until there's an opportunity for a site plan to be proposed, and then for them to make a decision on that, hoping and planning that this committee will come to a conclusion, and through DOT too, that there'll be a driveway on Golf View.
I do understand that. I've, I've heard that over and over and over from you about the system and Mr. McLaughlin. I've heard it, but I'm pretty sure I heard tonight that you could authorize that a resident's street cannot be used.
What you heard tonight was a lot that they want to add is a driveway from that, through that lot to a residential street. So it's a little bit different as far as opening or closing a street. That's, that was what was on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
But another thing I'd like to say is, this has gone on for a long time. Why have we not heard from the developers coming together and speaking and talking to each other?
When they, when they have, we will hopefully, we've got an update tonight, and so when you get, we'll have that update later on in the meeting.
We do have an update.
There is an update for this evening.
The developers have come together to talk.
I don't mean to interrupt, but if, the residents that's here tonight, I know we usually don't respond, but Commissioner Bellflowers has got a timeline that he wants to discuss at a later item on the agenda, and I think it will answer a lot of these questions and a lot of these concerns for you tonight that you're bringing up now. I know it's getting late, but, you know, if you would, stick around and hear the discussion, and I, I think it would help you a lot and maybe ease some concerns for you tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna stick around and listen, but with what's going on, I really would like for y'all to close Crampton Road, not to be used at all. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Starling? I don't know if it's necess, I know that we have in the past if they're saying the same thing, that we've listed the, the, the names and addresses, but if you need to read all of them, then we'll start now with the first one that you have.
I don't have to read them, that is, is up to the desire of the board. I provided them to you all.
I mean...
And Mr. McGeechy, who was the next live speaker, asked Chancellor to make his comments on his behalf.
Okay.
So we still do have one more.
Okay, well, we'll do that this time, and then we can make the board to make a decision about the remaining ones.
Mr. McGeechy is the chair of the Prime Moves Committee, and he had come to sign up for a speaker to present something to the board, but I think he had to go because his son had to leave, so he takes me what he wanted his comment to be, and I do have the presentations, all these certificates. He wants to thank, say thank you to everyone that supported the Prime Moves Toy Drive, it was very successful. He wants to present certificates to Town Manager Melissa Adams for the Town Hall. And he wants to present a certificate of appreciation to Hope Mills Parks and Rec. January twenty-twenty, planning agenda for the year twenty-twenty-one. February, they will partner with the Boys and Girls Club, Hope Mills, Zetas, and the Town of Hope Mills. The operation is a Valentine's Day give a card to a senior. Flyers will be emailed to Mrs. Jane and Town Manager to send out to town employees. They're also connecting with the Mayor's Youth Coalition, and if they were to meet to work together on a future event. And for Black History, they're partnering with Parks and Recreation, and they're doing signs that we placed along walking trails stating that "Did You Know" or "Who Is," and it'll provide historical information on key figures. And the signs will then stay in place to roll over to the month of March for Women's Month, so what they have is an initiative of every so often, the theme changes, but they'll have signs in February that are tied to Black History. The next month, those signs will transition to Women's Month and things of that nature, but that's the comment he wanted to give, and he wanted to present these certificates to the Town of Hope Mills to say thank you for making their toy drive a success. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I'd like to say that I have received the rest of the comments or the citizens that signed up for public comment that want to miss Jane to read it. We have a copy here of their emails that we have all read. I have received copies on my email of each one of these that I have already read. I think each board member has read them. The citizens that are here do not represent that neighborhood have said whatever one of these emails say. If we could just put these in record as, you know, receiving them and not have her read up each one individually, and we could save more time for our discussion on that item that Mr. Bellflowers requested on the agenda, just in the sake of time. And I do want to say that, that we do hear every one of these concerns. We have heard them and we have read them.
That's fine by me.
Okay.
I agree with that, Madam Mayor. I've read them over two or three times, and they're all saying the same thing, "Don't open the road."
Okay.
Leave it closed for the safety of the families.
Is that okay with the remaining board members? Do we need a motion and, and a vote on that, or can we do it by... And we need a motion to... Okay, is it, is it alright with the other board members that we put these in? And we've all got copies here before us.
Madam Mayor, I, I realize that, but there's a lot of these in here, too, that these, these folks took the time and packaged them up and, and put them in email, and a lot of them, I'm just looking through them, and, and their request here is, please read in the meeting. I mean, I have copies, just like the rest of the board members, and it's the desire of these citizens to have them read. I mean, that's why they sent them, is to have them read, so...
That's fine with me, I have no problem with reading. I was just trying to save time and...
I know, I know.
And give you more time on your item you requested, but if you'd like to have them read, we'll read them. I'm fine with that.
These are the written comments that I received prior to five PM today. If anyone sent something after five PM, I've been in meetings since that time, so I would not have had time to receive those in time for the meeting. First comment is from Tina Ray, who did not give me her address. Clerk Starling, it is with gravest concern that I write, requesting that you vote to keep Crampton Road permanently closed, given the high number of homeowners, pedestrians, commuters, and most especially children who reside in Brightmore slash Golf Acres. It would be a safety hazard to open Crampton Road to more traffic exposure. Safety must be of greater consequence than town planning and economic advancement. Please read during the public comments section of the upcoming Town Hall meeting. Thank you, Tina Ray. The next request is from Mr. Robert WAUGH, I'm gonna call that Wall. He also did not give a address. I find the delay in closing Crampton Road unacceptable. This foolishness by the commission to even consider Crampton as the access to the complex shows lack of leadership. The complex access should be off Golf View Road for safety reasons, both for the residents and the school traffic in our community. Both myself and my wife, Joanne, are registered voters. I'm going to skip the comments from Mr. Ms. Caldwell, since Ms. Caldwell was here and spoke. The next comment is from Richard Luckinow. Mrs. Starling, please read the following comments at Tuesday night Commissioners' meeting. Thank you. Madam Mayor and Town Commissioners, as of this date, the close Crampton Road petition has four-four-seven signatures. The Crampton Road slash Par Four Village process has gone on far too long, March twenty-twenty, and needs to come to an end. We, the citizens of Golf Acres and Brightmore, should not think we are being held hostage due to two developers that can't come to an amicable solution. Three Golf Acres neighbors with close proximity of the Crampton Road stub are in the process of putting their houses up for sale. The Commissioners need to be educated about the process and then take another vote to close Crampton Road permanently. There is no reason why the developers cannot keep Mr. McLaughlin appraised on the progress or lack of progress, and then he could provide meaningful updates at the Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Bellflowers and Legg have tried on three different occasions to permanently close Crampton Road where it exits into the Par Four complex. All three times, their efforts failed. Commissioner Bellflowers believes... Commissioner Bell Flowers believes most other Commissioners are not completely aware of the process as it pertains to the closing of a town street. Tonight, at the Hope Mills Commissioners' Meeting, Commissioner Bell Flowers will have on the agenda a discussion with four main references and present a handout to his fellow Commissioners regarding a workable timetable to complete the process from start to finish on closing Crampton Road. We, the citizens of Golf Acres and Brightmore, request that all Commissioners vote yes to start the process to close Crampton Road. Put developers on notice that our Commissioners care about their citizens. V. R. Richard Luckinow, 5758 Crenshaw Drive, Hope Mills. The next comment is from Brian Smith at 5747 Crenshaw Drive. Hello, Town of Hope Mills. Thank you for taking the time to revisit the concern we have with Crampton Road. I'm begging you, from a concerned father and neighbor who has grown up in Hope Mills all my 36 years of life, please close this road. Don't wait for something bad to happen. Please be proactive and not reactive. One of the reasons the neighborhood of Eaglewood got speed bumps is because a child got run over on a bike. The reason Golf Acres got speed bumps and stop signs is from concerned neighbors who saw a lot of speeding and careless drivers. Take the time and listen to the concerns of the neighbors in and around Golf Acres. With the developers having road frontage, there is no need to have any road coming through Golf Acres as we have enough traffic now. As you have heard from others, when Brightmore was built, there wasn't an exit and all traffic was pushed through Golf Acres. Please don't jeopardize the safety of my family and my neighbor's family by not closing this road. My house is right beside this stub or grass lot, parentheses, which I have been taking care of for the last 23 years, in parentheses. And this closure, closure would benefit my children's safety a lot by not having cars flying in between mine and my neighbor's house all hours of the day. Thank you for your time, and please think of the safety and well-being of our old but homey neighborhood. My next comment is from Brenda Luckinow, 5758 Crenshaw Drive. Mrs. Starling, would you please read this tomorrow night at the Commissioners' Meeting? Thanks. Madam Mayor and Town Commissioners, would you please consider closing Crampton Road permanently? Thank you. The next comment is from I, Mrs. Frida Houston. Lived at 5737 Crenshaw Drive. I'm writing to you to please do not opening Crampton Road into new proposed apartment complex behind my house. It will keep our children's safe in the neighborhood. The fourfold traffic increase through Golf Acres and Brightmore will create very unsafe situations. Safety at three crosswalks and two children at play, bicyclist runners slash walkers, et cetera, would certainly be in jeopardy. The access to this complex should be off Golf View Road and not through our established and quiet community. I'm a registered voter and have signed the position, petition. Signed, Mr. Walter and Mrs. Frida Houston. Next comment is from Earl and Glenda Sellover, with no address given. Good afternoon. My wife Glenda and I are writing to express our complete support for the permanent closure of Crampton Road. To open this road to allow access to the 114-unit duplex complex to be built on the old golf course will create a potentially dangerous increase in traffic that will certainly put all residents at risk. The access to this new complex should be off Golf View Road and not through our neighborhood roads. Next comment is from Vicki Maudlin. Dear Hope Mills, my name is Vicki Maudlin. I live at 5751 Crenshaw Drive. I'm writing this letter tonight in complete frustration. We have been battling this blind side of apartments going in and Crampton Road being opened to endanger our family for way too long. My husband and I chose this house and neighborhood 11 years ago because it was a quiet and safe place to raise our four children and now granddaughter. Once the golf course closed, lots of rumors started at what was going in from ballparks to ATV park to low-income housing. And never once were we, as the homeowners, directly affected with connecting property ever informed of anything. Matter of fact, myself along with other neighbors reached out to the mayor herself with concerns and were told there was no knowledge. I feel we have been lied to from the get-go and that those who are in charge, that we put our trust into, have completely trampled all over us. Opening Crampton Road changes this entire neighborhood. No more walking bikes, excuse me, no more riding bikes or walking. No more allowing those kids who attend Rockfish to be able to experience safely walking to and from school. No more training the little ones how to ride a bike. No more family, friendly family game of basketball, and for this, I am angry. My family, along with many of my amazing neighbors, took the time and effort at their own calls to put up a fence at the end of Crampton when safety was becoming an issue with vehicles and ATVs coming through. And now there is a possibility of hundreds of vehicles coming through there on a daily basis. Shame on you, Hope Mills, for even being, for this even being an option. My husband and myself have come to the decision that we no longer trust Hope Mills with having the citizens' best interest in mind and no longer trust those we put to be our voice. So for this reason, we are one of the many who have decided to buy out of Hope Mills and sell our family home. I hope you make the right decision and do what is best for the families and close Crampton Road permanently. Next comment is from Craig Hampton. He did not include his address this time, but from a previous email in August, he states his address is 3531 Crampton Road. To Mayor and members of the Board and Town Clerk, second objection. Please be advised that my concerns remain as stated previously, and I am fundamentally against the rental apartment project in total. But I would also like to appeal to you about the wisdom to act in the best interest of the existing citizens and taxpayers that have contracted you, contacted you regarding this matter. The Golf Acres community has supported this town and its project for more than 50 years. Don't treat our concerns less important than the developers' intent on making as much profit as possible through designs greatly favoring them, even if that means providing some of the golf course property, the citizens' property, BTW, and slash or funds to facilitate constructing the needed entrance and exits for this development traffic to use Golf View Road. I'm also concerned and disappointed with the lack of effective reach-out by you collectively and the town to the citizens of Golf Acres regarding this issue and any impending NCDOT drainage projects also using Crampton Road. Thanks to my other neighbors for contacting me and keeping me updated. My previous offer, to offer my views and objections in other venues regarding this matter remain. We've had too many development horrors in this town by rushing to accommodate developers at the risk or lack of concern toward, towards the affected citizens or the town's ability to use best practices towards development, not the least costly to the developer. Respectfully, Craig Hampton. The next comment is from R. H. Bob Stewart, 3607 Crampton Road. I want Crampton Road closed permanently at the intersection of Crampton Road and Crenshaw Drive. I have owned my home and lived on Crampton Road for more than 15 years. I have seen the traffic gradually increase over those years, both on Crampton exiting at Rockfish Road and on Suchack Drive exiting onto Golf View Drive. There are more than 400 single-family homes that share only four exits from the Golf View and Brightmore neighborhoods. Parenthesis, Suchack Drive, Crampton Road, Mulder Street, Via Bolt Drive and Casper Street, in parenthesis. The exit onto Golf View Drive has become harder and harder to negotiate in the past few years because of the amount of traffic traveling on Golf View Drive. I often see five or more cars waiting on Suchack Drive for there to be an opening in traffic, allowing them to continue with their day. The same occurs on Crampton Road exiting onto Rockfish Road, especially in the morning and the afternoon when the school is in session, as that is when the parents are parked along Crampton, waiting for their children to be released from Rockfish Elementary. The increased traffic on Crampton Road will also impact parents who walk their children to school along Crampton Road to one of the two walking entries to the elementary school. I know that a developer is wanting to build a 114-unit duplex complex on part of the old golf course, and the proposal is to use Crampton Road as the main exit slash entry for the complex. I and many of the residents along Crampton Road and the enjoy, and the adjoining streets confined within Golf View and Brightmore neighborhoods purchased my home partly because of the quiet street and little traffic. By adding 114 more cars driving in and out along our street, that quiet neighborhood will be gone. I hope that the town planners have done their due diligence and have conducted a traffic impact survey, as well as an impact survey on the road infrastructure, parenthesis, as the road built to accommodate this much traffic, question mark, in parenthesis. As an homeowner, taxpayer and registered voter in the Town of Hope Mills and specifically on Crampton Road, I would like to see the transparency of this development and all the impact surveys that are required by state and federal regulations presented showing why Crampton Road as the main, why using Crampton Road as the main entry slash exit and not Golf View Drive for this complex is the best decision. Without those recommended, without those I recommended to the council that they vote to close Crampton Road permanently where it end at Crenshaw Drive. Thank you for your time. Our final statement is from Ada and Michael Gillis, 3616 Crampton Road. Madam Mayor and Honorable Commissioners, I hope all is well with you and yours, especially in these stressful and trying times. My name is Michael Gillis, and we have been residents of Golf Acres for 34 years. With all that is going on in these times, there is no need or sense to add something else impending for the citizens of both Golf Acres and Brightmore when it can easily be avoided. That power and responsibility lies within each of you, our elected officials. I am speaking of the Par Four planned entrance slash exit on Crampton Road, which does not even pass the common sense test. As I have written several times before, the fourfold traffic increase through Golf Acres and Brightmore would create very unsafe situations. Safety at three school crosswalks and two children at play or walking to and from schools, bicyclists, runners slash walkers, et cetera, would certainly be in jeopardy. As the most direct routes in or out of the neighborhoods, Crampton, Crenshaw, Suchack, Masters, Floyd, Trevino, Archer, Bolt and Casper would be inundated with more speeders and traffic. With the increase in the amount of vehicle traffic, the existing residents will have difficulties just getting out of their driveways. Is this what we want? I say no, and I am sure the rest of the 1,000-plus voters in both Brightmore and Golf Acres subdivisions would agree. Therefore, I request that you all decide to close the Crampton Road stub permanently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we appreciate all the comments and know that we have all received phone calls and emails that we've all listened. That concludes public comments. Now we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, to have old business update on the Par Four development project.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. I have spoken with the developers of Crampton Road twice, or developers of the Par Four, the project, twice in the last week. Last week, I reached out to them to get something of a definitive update, and they indicated to me that they were having a partners' meeting pretty soon and that they were talking to their general contractor to finalize the pricing for the materials and things of that nature. Um, I told them that, you know, I felt they needed to speed up a little bit and that we needed to be able to at least get to a point where we can push this project forward. I spoke with them again today. Afterwards, brought to my attention, there's a little bit more comments coming in. And I basically told them that I'm probably gonna give them to probably mid-next month because I think that our board is getting to a position where they need to be able to make a decision. I conveyed that message to them very clearly today. They did indicate to me that they were more than likely gonna be trying to push to go ahead and officially set up another meeting with the committee, probably as early as next week. Because what happens is, if I'm giving them to mid-February or the second hearing in February to, for this to be back on the agenda, some of the steps they need to take prior to that need to be done now. Which means that the first thing, if you recall, we stated that whatever happens has to come from a recommendation from the committee. So they need to go ahead and get that in, get the committee meeting scheduled, let them look at the, the design. And he has indicated to me that they do not have a design contemplating the opening of Crampton Road. But that has to happen first so that that committee could give that recommendation to the board. The second step is that the updated revised site plan must be submitted to the county so it can, can be put back on the agenda. So if we're looking at, was it February 15th? What's the second hearing in February?
February 15th.
February 15th. In order for them to have that on the agenda on the 15th, the meetings and things of that nature, they need to have with the committee and getting it over to the county, they be happening pretty quickly. I let them know, I made it very clear to them, that regardless of what position that they took, I was almost certain what position I thought the board was gonna take at that second hearing. In my opinion, if they have the project on the agenda at that second hearing, you move forward. If they don't have that project on the agenda at the second hearing, you move forward. It has been conveyed to them very clearly what your position is, or at least what I think your position is, and I will update you as things progress. But he did indicate to me that they did, that the design has not changed in terms of the entrance off of Golf View, that it has not changed in terms of an interest in Crampton Road, and that he should be getting me something pretty quickly. Again, I have conveyed to him what the board's position is, and I will update you guys as I get additional information.
And as soon as we have that, their meeting, then we'll schedule the committee meeting, which would be, Mr. Maynor would be a member of that committee.
Exactly, exactly.
So that, that committee meeting would take place hopefully next week.
That committee meeting has to take place pretty soon because even though this is a site plan approval case, it does not require public hearing, the window of time that the county has to advertise is much smaller because they don't have to advertise for a public hearing, but they do. a public hearing, but they do need at least a week for it to be able to be placed on our agenda. So they don't have until the fifteenth. They really have until about a week prior to that to get all of this stuff done and get it to the county so that we can put it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All righty, under new business, we have consideration of ordinances, NS twenty-twenty-one-oh-one and NS twenty-twenty-one-oh-two, to allow NC DOT to reduce the speed limit on a portion of Highway fifty-nine. And this is behind tab eleven. Do you have, Ms. Adams, do you have that as far as an explanation? Do they need, if anybody has any questions?
There's a discrepancy where they're correcting it. And I believe it has something to do with, several years ago, we requested that it be corrected, and also it has to do with the grid line and the changes that are happening there.
Mm-mm.
And that stoplight.
Okay.
One repeals it, and the other one corrects it.
So do we just need to make a motion to approve the two?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so do we have someone?
Ma'am, I'm making a motion that we approve ordinances, NS two-oh-two, one-oh-one, and NS two-oh-two, one-oh-two, to allow NC DOT to reduce the speed limit on a portion of Highway fifty-nine.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Okay, the next thing is consideration of approval of the via to demolish fifty-four-forty-three Fountain Lane by Morrison's Lawn Care Landscape Tree Debris Removal for six thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And this is behind tab twelve. And Mr. McLoughlin, do you have information and references?
Yes. In the interest of time, I try to keep this short, but there's a lot of information here in terms of what has taken place with this property. I came into this halfway through, because code enforcement did officially get changed over to planning later in last year, but some of these activities happened well into January. As a result of the fire in January twenty-twenty that occurred at the subject property, the Town of Hope Mills Inspection Department deemed the property to be condemned and uninhabitable. As a result of the fire and condemnation, a code violation was triggered for non-compliance due to the fact that the property was never cleaned up. Code enforcement staff at that time conducted a hearing with the property owner on June twentieth to address the issues with the site and to explain in further detail the code violations. At that time, the property owner was informed by staff that the police investigation had concluded and that the district attorney's office had indicated that the property was no longer considered to be a crime scene and had not been since January of that year, when the property was released back to the property owner. After the conclusion of the hearing, the property owner was sent a formal finding of fact notice, providing him with forty-five days to clear the property of any damaged vehicles, debris, and unsafe structures. The forty-five-day period that was granted and the notice expired on August twelfth of twenty-twenty without any communication with the Town of Hope Mills, indicating that the property was moving in the direction of compliance. A second notice was sent to the property owner informing him that the Town of Hope Mills will be moving forward, starting the process of obtaining bids to demolish and clean the subject property. In the interest of providing the property owner with additional time to come into compliance and to ensure that the statute had been followed, an additional hearing was conducted on November fourth, twenty-twenty. At that time, is when I got involved, in November, staff notified the property owner that the Town of Hope Mills had received three bids for the cleanup of the property, and another official notice was sent through certified mail. As staff was informed that the letter was refused, another notice was hand-delivered on December fourth, twenty-twenty, and that's where we are now. Staff has not been contacted in any way to date as it relates to the issuance of a demo permit that he would need to be able to file or apply for to be able to start the cleanup. The lowest bid for the cleanup was provided by Morrison's Lawn Care Landscaping on tree debris for six thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-five, and I also had staff go by the site today to take a photograph to confirm whether or not something was happening. What typically takes place is not a year's time. What typically takes place is we give up to thirty days for a notice. We have, there is no time limit, but we give up to thirty days typically in the event that we're seeing some kind of movement in the direction of compliance. Let's say that we told him to clean it up, he hasn't completed the cleanup by the time the expiration started, but we can see him making progress, he's applied for a demo permit, he's asking us for more time. Under those circumstances, I do think that I would have even a little bit more leniency to give him more time, but what I have here, there has been no movement of any kind, and the fire was January of last year. So the only thing that's before you this evening is consideration of the approval of the lowest bid that was received, and I'd like to open up the floor to any discussions that you may have.
Any questions or any discussion?
Madam Mayor, it's been a long time.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Marley has comments.
I have a question. How do we get our money back from him? Because he's walked away from that property. If we're gonna pay?
Put a lien on the property.
Yeah, the cost of the six thousand goes as a lien on the property, so that if he ever, he has indicated he has people interested in buying, but when we have to take this approach of us doing the corrective action, the cost of that rolls into a lien on the subject property, so that in the event that he ever tries to sell that property, that's how we get our money back. That's correct.
We get our money off the top.
That's correct.
Is there any way we can take that property? Claim that property?
You have any first condemnation powers, and you can do it if it's for a public purpose. If you're gonna use the property for some public purpose, you do have the authority, but you would have to pay for the highest and best use of the land to do that. You'd have to go through court systems to file an action. You would simply have to buy the property.
I will say that there is a possible use that is public. I'll just.
There's what?
That is public.
Well, it would be adding to our park.
Which is public.
The lake park, if we had that corner lot, it would add to our lake park and increase the parking and everything. I just.
I will say, Commissioner Marley, that has been what has been here the entire time. How to do that legally through the proper channels is where I would like to see it go. It is an eyesore, but if you notice, we have a piece of property we purchased, our Fountain Lane, that we're combining with our Lake Peace. There's a piece that's in the middle that we don't own, but this piece is on the corner. If we are able to acquire all three of those, that will actually give us that entire corner, and the use would be for the lake.
Can I?
But the legal will come in in terms of the process.
Can I ask another question? So if we spend six thousand sixty-four hundred dollars on tearing this house down, and then he's, clearly he's probably walked away from it, and he's not worried about it, he's probably collected insurance on it and pocketed the money, and didn't do what he was supposed to do as the owner, he's ignored all our requests. We spend this money, he just sits on that property till whenever. We never get our money back. So if we're gonna spend that money, is there any way we can find out how much it would cost to do what you're saying, purchase that land? Before we make a decision to spend six thousand, if we can get it for, you know, a little bit, I don't know, would it be okay to bring back a price to give us an option before we just say yes, spend sixty-four hundred dollars to tear it down? And have nothing to show for our money?
I'd be completely open to you guys directing us to investigate to see what that would be. I don't see that, I don't see how if you guys instructed us to explore that, how that would negatively affect the bid.
I think you have the right idea, but this guy's tucked it in.
And then there's just the legal process you follow, which is you file, you know, a notice of condemnation, and you put into the, I think you put it into the court system and trust or something, you put the amount that you think is the highest and best use, the value of the land. They have a right to contest that, and say that, no, the highest and best use is something different, and there's process played out. But we can look, if the board is interested in, you know, using condemnation proceedings to take that land and use it for park, we can certainly look into that.
You want to, do you need a motion to direct you to do that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Do I need to withdraw my motion?
But in the meantime, if we're gonna do that?
We would just leave it.
Just table this discussion.
But then how long, how much longer would that take? I mean, it's gonna sit there all this time. If we do a budget amendment and we're gonna get it back on a lien, will the town still be reimbursed, but at least we've already started moving on it?
I think what Commissioner Marley is saying is, if we take the demo and lien approach, we don't have any idea of knowing when we'd actually possibly get the money back when he does sell.
You condemn it.
I think with this particular procedure, you would table consideration of this to see how long that process would take. Once we give you the information back, you have the option of weighing, do we move forward with acquiring it, or do you go ahead and green light the demolition?
There may be some way to offset the cost of, you know, of the condemnation proceedings with the lien that we would essentially have on the property if we went that route. So we probably just wanna do a little bit of digging into logistics and how that might play out before we take any particular action.
So you want, we need a motion in to direct the attorney to look into that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chancellor?
Yes.
All due process has been afforded to the homeowner?
In my opinion, several times.
And he's been non-responsive the entire period?
Completely. At least to the zoning staff and code enforcement.
Or anybody here at town? He hasn't responded at all?
No.
To anybody?
I think he contacted a state representative, but.
Representative Suckah, and I've spoken to him.
And one thing I want to clarify, the only thing in my opinion that provides a stay in terms of us moving forward to a zoning notice?
Kind of where I'm going.
Is corrective action that is tied to what needs to be cleaned up in the zoning ordinance. So had contact representative, that's fine. I need a building, I need a demo permit, I need something that ties to the violation and something that tells me that I can come to you to say, hey, he is in violation, but he has done these few things, applied for a demo permit, removed a car from the lot. If we're dealing with the first notice and thirty days later, I would be a little bit more lenient. We're talking about a whole calendar year, and I can't, I can't honestly stand before you today and say that I've seen any activity on this of any kind. I think it looks exactly like it looked in January of last year. So with that said, I would say communicating with staff through representative, yes. Adequately responding to the notice, I would say emphatically no.
So I have a question for Dan. Is one contingent on the other? Is one action contingent on the other?
No. You could do both, you could do any combination.
Yeah, because, I mean, look at the amount of time that this has been. I say we go forward with the demo and give Dan the directive to research obtaining the property. That's my motion.
Now, for another clarification piece, Dan, based on what you said, if we move forward with the demo to six thousand, we do have the authority to deduct that from the highest best use if we get to that point?
That's something that I've been looking for.
Okay, that's.
I don't know the answer to that. It makes rational sense that you would be able to do that, but I've never looked at that issue directly before, so I would have to do some research.
Because if he moves one car, he's gonna be looking for a stay. So I don't want, I don't want to prolong this. I just don't. I say we go ahead with what we're doing, and.
That's a very valid point, because you're still doing the direct, you're basically saying direct, but still do this.
Mm-hmm.
It's at the pleasure of the mayor.
That's my motion, Mayor.
I'll second Mr. Belford's motion.
So your motion would actually be to tear the property, demolish the property, and at the same time instruct Dan to look at the possibility of condemnation?
Yes. That's my motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Can you have, can he have something about a next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have time?
At least cost, process, stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, the process of doing it is relatively straightforward. It's, I think the issue that I would need to look at is the process of if we spend money and have a lien on the property, if you take the property through a condemnation proceedings, then can you deduct the lien from the amount you pay? My inclination is that you probably can, but I would be more, so I think I can have an answer for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this board remembers or not, but this gentleman was in here last year, and he's very combative, combative with something that happened to him through the police department or something with his son. So he's already been approached about selling the property, and he don't want to sell it. He don't want to clean it up either, but I get questions almost every week about when we're gonna do something. So it's time.
We've got a motion on the floor, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. The next thing on the agenda is consideration of creating a special events committee, and we would like this committee to be something that Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim would head up. I brought the information from the, and the reason for this is trying to have some type of event or celebration for this year, because coming out of COVID, we hope, but if not, doing some things so that we can celebrate Hope Mills. And there's a lot of things happening in Hope Mills that would mark this year special. But in nineteen ninety-one, at that time, it was Mayor Bradford, and I have a copy of the newspaper and the list of events. But the actual first event here started on March eighth, which is the town charter day. So that we'd be looking at setting up special events, thinking that our first event for this year, this hundred and thirtieth birthday, would be the event we held today, the groundbreaking. One in February would be possibly the unveiling of the mural that we have of the train depot that ironically the first train tracks that were put down was about eighteen ninety-one, but they were wooden tracks and it was a tram. So again, it falls into line with our hundredth and thirtieth birthday. But we'd like to form this committee, and it would be made up of the chairs of our current town committees, if they would like to be a part of the committee or represented from those committees, because we'd like to tie our committees that are already involved into this, so that everybody would have input. Parks and Rec, so that way the events they currently have would fold into this year of celebration of our hundredth and thirtieth birthday. And then we do have something going on with the Friends of the Hope Mills Library, which we've been given the proceeds from money that they actually had left from when they raised money for the library, so that that park would open up during this year too. So that's the request, and then we will set up our first meeting once we can notify and get the members of the committee together. And it would just be a temporary committee just for this celebration, and we would gear it toward the events and mirror it very similar to what happened for our hundredth birthday. So that's what I'm asking for.
You need a motion for that?
A motion to approve our specially, I guess we'll call it hundred and thirtieth birthday celebration.
I'll make that motion to approve the special events committee, the Mayor Warner and Mayor Pro Tim McCray as chairs of the committee for the hundred and thirtieth birthday celebration of the town.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed?
You guys are gonna select the commemorate members of that committee, correct?
We're gonna send a notice to each of the town committees requesting the chairs to meet with us or a representative of that committee. meet with us or a representative of that committee. So like, for instance, if the chair of the historical committee doesn't wanna be the representative, somebody from that committee would be on this committee. We're gonna make it a master committee made up from the other committees and include the, um, Parks and Rec and, um, thinking that what we would do is coordinate their current events within this, so we wouldn't be duplicating what they're already planning. Okay, uh, we've already got a vote? All righty. Next thing is, um, discussion of CGI video project to include details. The reason why that I requested this to be put on the agenda was because the question has been asked is how much is this costing the sponsors to make this video? Because the concern was that this is a, um, similar process that's being done with other types of things where you, uh, use the town's name or use a school's name and you go and get sponsors to pay for it. And the question has been asked is how much are those sponsors costing?
Um, that I could have to get back with you. I do know that about eight different businesses, eight different businesses participated. Um, the program is no cost to us, so the videos that they're doing for us is, is no cost, but I guess what this company does and they're doing in City of Fayetteville too, I think they've been working Fayetteville for almost two years, um, when they're going into the town, they will approach businesses to inquire about their desire to purchase ad space that will be included in the video. Um, I'm sorry for not having that information for you and I didn't know that's what, um, the specifics would be tied to. I can get that to you tomorrow. They sent me a list of the eight businesses, but what happens, what you have in your package is just a synopsis of how the overall videos will take place. There has been some time, but it's a pretty, uh, extensive, um, undertaking in terms of what these videos will be to date. Um, my town manager has done her press release. I'm working with you guys on the welcome video, um, my economic development video, I've sent the end script to that. I'm working with Parks and Rec for the, uh, other, another video with them. And then myself, Parks and Rec and the chamber will join in for another video, but the businesses' ads will be incorporated throughout those different videos. But I will find out from CGI what the amount was that they charged and most of the businesses I've talked to, they're really just, you know, when can I see the video? Um, they know they spent money, but they wanna know when they can anticipate, um, seeing the videos. Um, right now we're setting it up, we're trying to set it up for CGI to come in in a couple of weeks to shoot the remaining videos at one time.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And, and this, and this does go on, on the back page here under, under F with the local businesses and stories. Let me, let me ask this question, Chancellor. This started in June.
Yes.
The video has not been finished, hasn't been marketed at all, yet these businesses have been, have paid for marketing on a video that's not been shown since June. Is that a fair statement?
Partially. Um, it's not one video, there are a series of videos. Now, I'm not sure what CGI conveyed to the businesses, but, um, from my understanding, this is not something that you could just generate in a couple of weeks. Um, there are one, five separate videos that you're doing. The first one has already been done, that was the, uh, advertised on our website, um, and our social media pages. That was the welcome, where the, um, press release video from my town manager announcing what the partnership is. I do have that, I can send it, um, to you as well, but this is not something that, um, in terms of videography, um, they're out in Rochester, this is not something that I at least want everyone to understand, this is not something you're gonna turn around in a month's time. I think City of Fayetteville, they've been working on this for about two years. I don't think that ours will take nearly that long, but part of what I need is the cooperation from all the other entities I need scripts from. So I'm not writing all the scripts for the five videos. I'm writing the script from the economic development piece that I have sent in, but for the welcome video, I have Kenwana's piece, um, I would need your piece, I would need the mayor's piece, I'm working with Parks and Rec. So I'm quarterbacking and facilitating getting the scripts from all these different entities, um, but this is not something where it's just one little video you put together for thirty minutes and then you can turn around in a couple of months. This does, at least from my understanding going into it, this was gonna be something that takes some time to generate. Um, I do know that what we saw with the welcome video was very powerful because it included a script that town manager did, but it also included flyovers of, of the lake, um, the new town logo on our water tower, key developments around town. So there is a, um, methodology that you see here. Another thing we're also doing with the new, um, Fayetteville Can Do campaign with FC, um, EDC is incorporating that in terms of the colors, in terms of the fonts and in terms of the logo, because that branding idea just came, uh, to fruition a couple of months ago. So there's other things that we're doing to make sure that we tweak it, but the one thing I wanna make sure everyone understands is this is not something that you can turn around in about one or two months. Um, this is something that does take some time to generate, but I will find out the cost and maybe I can reach out to the individual businesses directly to get, provide them some more information.
If I was a business and I paid for marketing space on a video that's been in some type of production since June and here it is January, I would want my money back. I tell you what bothers me, it, it, what bothers me is companies using our town logo, which is what happened here, and then not producing a video with, to businesses that paid for marketing space.
I, I would correct that a little bit. I don't think that the business didn't produce a video. We haven't given them the information they need to be able to produce it. Part of that is on me, part of that is on us all.
But these businesses paid, they've already paid.
I understand that, Commissioner Bellflowers. They paid a company to provide a video for them, that company cannot provide the video. Like for instance, I do not have your script. I can't do the welcome video without it. I can't do the script. I'm not an elective official. So while we're actually wondering what is taking so long, I need some cooperation as well. I can't do this, all the pieces that are directly tied to what I have control on have been sent in. I'm working with the other departments, I have the Chamber of Commerce involved, I have Parks and Rec involved, I have elective officials involved, I have a spotlight for small businesses that'll be, uh, that'll become a part of mine. So I'm not doing this specifically on my own, but the quicker I can get items back, that's when CGI will have the ability to finish the video to provide it. I understand what the position of the business is.
Yeah.
Um, which is why I said I reached out to them, but I don't think it's fair to say that it's CGI's fault that the video hadn't been produced when they can't finish it until I get them the information. I can't get it until I get it from the individuals that I'm working with to produce their scripts.
Mayor Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to, to add to what, uh, Jesse's saying that I did get a call from this one lady that had a nail salon, that she submitted money to it and they gave her the money back because she has gone under because of COVID. But she did get her money back from them.
Yeah, so, so if that, if that's something that she reached out to CGI and they refunded her money, I don't have an issue with that at all.
I think they should refund all of their money until they're finished the videos.
I think that's.
That's my thought.
That's your take, I completely understand. I'm just explaining to you what is taking so long.
Yeah, I, I, so this is, this, this project is completely focusing on Hope Mills, but, but the project, the information that Mr., um, Van Ginnis presented, they're also gonna highlight our businesses and, and things like that as well, uh, but it's gonna be grouped into, uh, Cumberland County.
A regional, more regional.
A regional, uh, okay. The, the second thing I would like to say, um, going along with what Commissioner Bellflowers and Edwards were saying, I wish they would have done the other parts before they reached out to the businesses, if there were so many other moving parts before they got to that point, so that these businesses are not sitting there waiting after they paid their money. So that's, that's, that's all I, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
The next thing that, um, is on our agenda and we have the, uh, in your package, you have all the calls that have been made to the police department, um, on Trade and Ellison Street. Uh, the reason why I requested this is because the, and really code enforcement too, my concern was that we keep getting, uh, people concerned about what is happening on Trade and Ellison Street and some of the houses, uh, lack water, um, lack lights, but there's people living there. Um, and the concern has been, um, the fact that, um, the, the upkeep of those properties being in the historical district. Uh, the reason for the number of, of police calls or the number of, um, crime reports was because that was an issue, um, that was brought up, in fact, it was actually brought up during a conversation with one of the people that has a business down there because their concern is that, uh, because the vac, the buildings are vacant. And so that's where my, my thought was that we need to be more aware as a board that this is the historical district. There is a lot happening down there that would be detrimental to somebody wanting to put a business there. Um, and that's where we're, we're trying to, to get some of these little places opened up, um, I think we've, we've got to do something and, and so I just wanted to bring that to the attention, um, because if you look at the number of, since, um, the calls that have been on these sheets that from, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable the number of calls to the different residences of the different locations. And then I think far as code enforcement, I don't know how many reports have been made for code enforcement, but this was just information to the board and then also to start thinking about ways that we might can do something in that area, um, to improve not only the looks of it, but to recognize the fact that we have identified it and it's not a very good gateway, um, until we start making it look better and getting under control what's happening down there.
Um, two, uh, several things that I would say that, um, I'm contemplating and then we'll probably roll into, uh, some type of, um, initiative. I'm not sure if it requires a budget, um, proposal, but, um, we have, uh, well, staff has registered for the, this year's version of the, um, Main Street Conference with NC Commerce. Um, the Main Street program is what we've all, um, also always wanted to establish on the Trade Street, um, in the Trade Street area. Ironically, the gateway study we're doing off of the, the loop, um, one of the reasons why NC Commerce was open to assisting with project managing that study is if we were committed to, uh, making Trade Street a Main Street, um, uh, Hope Mills a Main Street town, Trade Street would be that process. Um, I have s, talked to, uh, NC Commerce about their downtown associate program, it's called a DAC, it's a three-year program, which is the catalyst for setting up a Main Street community. So that's something we're looking at. I've also talked to, uh, Cumberland County staff about possibly, if you recall, when we had a conversation about the subdivision ordinance, I talked to you guys about possibly doing overlays. Um, I have about three or four different areas I'd like to put overlays in, but ironically we have an overlay district that already exists in our historic district. One thing I want people to understand is just because it's labeled the town of Hope Mills Historic District does not mean that all the regulations have to be historic in nature. So what we can do now, um, it would require an amendment to our ordinance, is to go in and maybe strike down uses that we know that we don't want in this area anymore. That's the main thing you do in any of these, uh, overlays, you don't want the junkyards, you don't want the cars. So someone that, um, would have the ability to rezonate property, um, in this area for use, that use is stricken down as being allowable in that area. Um, another thing we can do from the condition of the buildings, that's more through the bill, uh, Buildings and Inspection Department is, uh, your minimum housing and minimum code standards and as it relates to, there is a gray area where a code violation becomes a, a baitment issue that's tied to health and public safety with the condition of a house, but anything in that realm, I think falls under the minimum housing and minimum, uh, building code, uh, stand, statute. So I think between my department in terms of code enforcement and inspections, we could probably craft some different ways of approaching it in this standpoint. What they typically do for housing is, um, if it's vacant, um, it has to be, the windows have to be boarded up. Um, there are certain things that that landlord is responsible for a minimum, keeping it to a minimum level until it's able to be rented out. Um, so those are some of the things we're exploring on trying to do on Trade Street.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, next we have, uh, discussion regarding the process to permanently close any street or public alley as requested by Commissioner Bellflowers. And, uh, I do want Commissioner Bellflowers to know that we are familiar with how to close a street, that one of the comments made, one of the letters, uh, we have, um, I guess the most recent time that we spent a great deal of time was with Plank Road and that was the street, the town street that we did close, so we, we do know the procedure. Um, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bellflowers, he has provided you all a timeline and then I know there's been some other comments in reference to, um, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bellflowers.
Thank you, Mayor. The main reason I put this on the agenda for tonight was as informational purposes for four references on starting the process to close a street. And that starts with adopting a resolution declaring the intent to close the public way and calling a public hearing on the post clo, closing. And proper notice must include a publication of the resolution once a week for four success, successive weeks prior to the hearing. Now what drove me to put this on here, what motivated me to put this on here, is because there's been no action from the developers since September. And I put together a timeline of events from current all the way back into June. There's only been one committee, one committee meeting. There's been a bunch of discussion, there's been a bunch of, of motions made by the board, by members of this board. But when it comes down to it, that in September was the last discussion from the developers at all about any type of meeting or agreement. In fact, the town received an agreement from Solutions, uh, Fordy Solutions outlining the design cost back in September twenty-first and that was in support of the agreement that was offered in July. So there's been no update since September until tonight. So that's what motivated me to put it on here. I felt like we should have put a timeline on this. We probably should have put a timeline on this through the process and what I mean by timeline is that we draw a line in the sand. That served me well in all my years in the Army and I think it should serve us well here, is that we finally say enough's enough. It's not gonna be, see, month after month, it's, planning staff reported the developers have indicated they do not have any information at this time and that they are still working through the driveway options and possible redesign of the subdivision. So that's what motivated me to put this educational piece and, and Mayor, I, I, I didn't insinuate at all in anything that I wrote that the board wasn't familiar. I was just presenting the process to start the resolution to close Crampton Road, snub. So tonight we get an update that I guess the developers are gonna have a meeting. And if I remember correctly, there is a process and I think Chancellor went through the process quite well tonight of exactly what must occur. So I'm asking the board tonight to consider drawing a line in sand that enough is enough. And February is that line in sand. This has been discussed a bunch of times, there are continuous amount of letters that are passionate from neighbors that live in the neighborhoods. But I believe we're at a point of, you know, if, how long are we gonna let this go on? But I believe we're at a point of, you know, if, how long are we going to let this go on? Without any action. It almost sounds like the property we just talked about in another case that we finally take some action on tonight. And then there's other cases that we've taken some action on. So I didn't know anything about this update when I added this agenda item to the agenda. I had no knowledge of the update, and not until town manager spoke about it tonight. But February is where I, February is it. That's how I feel. February is it.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
In discussion of this, I, I had a, I called Commissioner Bellflowers and I talked to him about it when I seen the item on the agenda. I, I had a discussion with him and I agreed with Commissioner Bellflowers about, you know, hindsight, I think we should have maybe put a little bit stricter time limit on, on this issue. We were trying to do the right thing with the gentleman's agreement and bring everybody to the table. But this is Brian's opinion. I think it's like Commissioner Bellflowers said, I think it's been long enough. A decision should have been made by now. We've been putting the citizens that live on Crampton Road and Brightmore Golf Acres. We, we've, we've been putting them off saying that, you know, we want to hear from the committee before we make a decision. I still think that was the right thing to do. I hate that it's taking this long. But I agree with Commissioner Bellflowers and I learned today as well that there was going to be an update other than nothing's been done. So that was kind of a surprise when we came in here today. So in a lot of what the planning director told us tonight with his timeline, I agree that I feel like by the second meeting in February, that they should have a finalized, something finalized here in front of this board. So this board can make a decision on where we need to go. And as Mr. McLaughlin said, you know, they bring it, we make it, if they don't, then we got to make a decision. And right now, I feel like, I feel like the board's hand is being called and we're at a point where we need to make a decision. So I agree with Commissioner Bellflowers and what he said. And if he's wanting to put that into a form of a motion, I'd be glad to second it.
I am. Additional piece, you know, and thank you, Commissioner Marley, is that we've got a board retreat that's coming up here in March. And we've got some priorities that we've got to entertain for the town, for all the town, for all the neighborhoods, for all the citizens. So my motion would be February 15th is when this board will take action. That's my motion.
Where is the, what is our second meeting?
That is our second meeting.
February 15th, second meeting.
I'll second that, Mayor. If anybody's got any other discussion on it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say that I was never in opposition of the road being closed. I too was trying to do the process the right way. I was denied, I was, I was waiting to close the road. So I wanted the road, I wanted them to finish the committee doing what they were supposed to do and then going back and closing the road. All of the information is not stated in here. You can go back and you can go back and you can look at the discussions that we've had about this. I too thought that this would be resolved by now. I had no idea that it would take this long. And that I could see as a resident how this could create a lot of anxiety. So I too, I thought it would be done by now. I apologize. I was trying to do it, the process the right, right way. And hopefully we were going to do it right to satisfy our citizens and keep our gentleman's agreement like we stated. But I would just like to say that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor. If we close that road, then we force their hand. We don't have to give them to the 15th of the month. We hold you up our hand. That's what we fail to do all the time as a town is hold you up our hand. We want everybody to tell us what they're going to do.
Well, I think where we are now, it'll take a month to, to, to start the resolution, start the process. And I believe that if you use that February 15th date and then you start, that would be where you would also have a resolution ready on that 15th.
Correct.
Otherwise, that would be your decision. In other words, they come to us with their site plan ready to approve, which, and then that approval hopefully would be with the Goffview driveway. And then you do the resolution to close Crampton, which that would then start the process. They're not going to start building anytime soon. We already know that. Their site plan has to be approved.
Okay, can I ask Dan?
The motion would be to February 15th.
Well, will you have a resolution ready in case something else happens?
I, I can. I mean, we can have it.
Is that okay with the board?
Jane, Jane's got one from back in August. I mean, it's just, you just got to change the date on it. She has a resolution. That was presented in August.
I'll, I'll put this out there too, for, just for y'all's consideration. You could go through the entire process with, I mean, just doing the resolution and public advertising, public hearing. Doesn't mean you have to close the road. You can still choose to accept their plan if they present a plan that the board approves. So you could go through, you could start the process earlier if you like and then hold the decision until whenever you want to make it. But it's totally up to the board. We can have a resolution ready for the 15th and then start.
And that would be, that would give them a D-Day. In other words.
Right. That would give them, and then, you know, the board would be able to make the decision as early as March 15th.
Okay. All right, so, okay, we have a motion on the floor. And Mr. McLaughlin, if you would make sure that you let them know that their D-Day is February 15th for bringing their information to the board. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. If that works, thank you. All righty. Next thing on the agenda is the nominating committee's recommendation. And I had that, you got the recommendation. I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, the nominating committee would like to nominate Mr. Stephen Mabe to serve on the Board of Adjustments and the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay. So we have a recommendation for Steve Mabe, Stephen Mabe to serve on Parks and Rec and the Board of Adjustment.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
I know that man, young man, very well.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. Next, we have on, requested by Commissioner Bellflowers, 5606 Pace Street. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bellflowers.
Thank you, Mayor. I read this, this email about this code violation. Even though I read a text from a resident that knew about this business on December 22nd. So I, I want to know how it happened. I want to know who spoke with this company and the project managers. Because, I mean, the property manager, sorry. Because I went down to this property, when I read this, I went down there and I saw not only cars, I saw equipment, tow trucks, all kinds of stuff down there. And you tell me a business owner is going to move a business into Hope Mills, into that old house, without having assurances they were not in violation. And then, and then honestly now, I, I learned about this on December 22nd. From a text from a resident.
To, to answer your question, Town of Hope Mills staff has no control whatsoever over the business practices of a property owner. I want to make that very clear. If a business opens in a establishment, then they do not have a zoning permit. And if that business worked out a rental of that unit with a property manager, that's not something we can control at all. The only thing we can control is what happens after it's brought to our attention. I'm not aware of it being there on December 22nd. It was brought to my attention on the morning of January 11th. When I reached, when I got to the property, specifically myself, I did not put this on code enforcement. I went to the property.
Yeah.
I found a number for the tow truck company and I called him directly. I also found out who the property manager was and I contacted them directly. They indicated to me that they were not aware that this was going to be a tow truck establishment in terms of cars being located. Because what they were told was that someone needed an office to rent. That's what the property manager told us. So again, I want to make it very clear. If there's a vacant building next door and someone wants to rent it out for a bar and it's a residence, the only, I don't have any control whatsoever over that transaction. The only thing I can do is notify the person who was occupied illegally that it's not allowed. So when this guy was contacted, there's two violations. One, if this was a permitted use, he still has to go get a building permit, a zoning permit. It's a standalone building, so it requires board approval. That's if it's a permitted use. This is on commercial, this is an industrial use, so it's not a permitted use. So it's an illegal business without a permit and it's an illegal use. But I'm going to push back a little bit on what we should have done prior to because we basically just be attacking leasing agents. I don't have any control over what happens prior to them occupying. The only thing I can do, what I am doing, which is above and beyond by also calling this guy to help him relocate. To an industrial use, that does allow this. So there's a lot more that goes into what we're doing with these businesses. It's a little bit more than just what we're stating in the code letter that states that he's in violation. He's currently in, the notice he got is expired yesterday.
Yep.
But we still have the leniency of the general statute states that we have to at least give a 30-day period of appeal. If you have the event where you're talking about the Fountain Lane piece, there's bids that may have to go out in some of these places for cleanups and things of nature. Those are things that can take place in between that seven day or eighth day and now. This is a little different because, which is why I typically say that we usually give 30 days. The reason why our condition is down to seven. This is not a legal business that started doing some things that were a little bit outside of the code. This is not a permitted use and it's a building that was occupied illegally. That's a little bit different. But I don't know what we could do as staff to stop this from happening again when this transaction that lent itself to this guy being there, they don't have to go through us to lease a building. They have to go through us to get the authorization to legally occupy.
Right. And they did not do that.
No, no, sir. Now, he's aware of that. But again, on the backside, I have already found a piece of property he can go to tomorrow.
Okay.
Whether or not he does that, that's, that's up to him. But what I have indicated to him that there is a process we have for the removal of these cars if he does not take a, a corrective action pretty aggressively.
How much longer does he have to leave the building?
In my opinion, he should have left yesterday.
That's where I'm going.
But, but my whole point is when I looked at, and, and this is another thing with the 160D, I have an update on that as well. But when we looked at the 160D section that talks about the violations period as outlined in the general statute, it does not, it's very vague on the duration of time, but it clearly states we have to give a 30-day period of appeals. So which means that I can't technically move forward today because I'm pretty sure he doesn't know the general statute, but we still have to follow those regulations. So if we moved on it today, I've now given him due process to be able to possibly file an appeal now. I told him that he may as well go ahead and just move it because the only way to correct this, to get into compliance is to rezone this to manufacturing. You guys will never do that. So there is no remedy that I think that's afforded to him that would be successful. So to me, appealing it to the Board of Adjustment for a use that's never going to be a permitted use is almost a waste of time. So I think that the best route is for me to help this guy. Even though he's completely legal, I can help the guy find another piece of property he can relocate to. I think it's a piece, I'm not going to say the name of it right now, but I think it's a piece that is probably best suited for it is in the Town of Hope, Hope Mills Limits, but it is on an industrially zoned property. What he would, and it's a multi-use piece, so he wouldn't even have to go through the board to approve it. I have to, I've, I've been trying to contact him for like two days. I haven't been able to reach him. But I think we have found a solution to this that not only makes this go away, but I can probably locate a new business in Hope Mills that would tie into our tax base. But it's something that, like I said, if, if, it's one thing to tell me he just needs to leave. It's another thing to say, hey, I found a piece of property, contact this guy to see if he'll execute a lease with you to utilize his industrial property.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Does he have a permit for those records?
Everything on that property is in violation. The cars, the types of cars, the business, the ti, everything.
I went down there and looked at it.
And you can imagine my look when I saw it.
Yeah.
Especially where, where it is.
On the rotation.
I mean, I stopped there. And I looked at it, I said, you gotta be kidding me. He's got campers there, tow trucks. I mean, he's got all kinds of stuff there.
So, so that's why it was a little bit, the, the duration of time was reduced significantly. But I think I can probably get him out quicker with the approach I'm doing now to try to find him another piece of property. Even though I don't have to do that, but he is fully aware that's not something that, I don't know of a process that would be successful through here for him to stay there. But that's the first use I'm going to strike down through the overlay, I promise you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to say something. And this is no, this is, I'm not taking a hit at you.
No, no.
Because it was not you. I received a call from a business owner that they was going to stop her from opening up her business the day before she was going to open because she did, she did not have something that her contractor was supposed to get.
Yeah.
And so I would just, I'm just asking if everybody can be given the same mercy. So here, here this man is in 1520, sound like violations. And she had two and there was no conditions. Nobody was trying to have a conversation with her. It was advertised that her business was going to open about a month before it was ever out. She had signs up. But she was approached the evening before she was going to open that she didn't have some permits. That somebody here knew that she didn't have. So my thing is let's treat everybody, give everybody the same mercy.
I agree. If I, I agree with that, Mayor Protem, because what makes our job very difficult is when I am married to the code, period. I'm not married to who owns the business. I'm not married to where it is. I'm married, I'm married to the code. But when I get a directive, I have to go where that directive, or at least I have to investigate. But one thing that makes it difficult for me is when I'm not able to be consistent. What I will say about the code is when I got the call on that, they were in compliance with zoning. And they received their zone approval in October. They were in compliance with their liquor sign-off from zoning standpoint, which is why I had no involvement in that. So when I get the call, I look at the case, I research it, if it's something that I, that they're in violation of my ordinance. I actually do go to Great Lakes to try to help people through this, even if it's a rezoning this way, that way. Even if it's, and then what happened with this lady, and it's pretty bad, it's not on her end, she got screwed by her contractor. So at the end of the day, that's why I say sometimes we have to be careful how we go into these businesses because I see a violation of the ordinance. A business owner sees an attack from the town. That's just how they take it every time, regardless of what.
Or, or the lack of help or assistance from the town, as in this case.
This guy got a letter for seven days. Look, this is what I can do to help. I didn't have to do that for the code because the only thing that was, and, and, and the only thing that was wrong was their fire permit and their electrical permit just needed to be pulled. The contractor never came. They didn't know that he never came, but when Kenny got ahold to him, he looked to him, he signed it immediately.
What I would like to say about the code is they, they did.
They did everything. They did everything.
They did everything in one day. The day that they were, that, um, that they were supposed to open. They got, they got, they inspected, they signed off, they did, they bent over backwards for those people to make sure that everything was in compliance.
Once they knew.
Yes.
Yeah, once they were made aware. Okay.
I'm just saying.
Our inspection, yeah, yeah.
We have to be at least, what I do on my end, I remain consistent. If there is an issue where the, the message from staff is not going to be positive. I go down to the business and sit down and talk to them. When we had the issue with the McLean Sawmill a few years ago. They had a legitimate.
Yeah.
Concern. They have a property next door that they own. And it's a great problem to have, just like everybody else. They were selling so many lawnmowers, they ran out of space to put them on their property. So they're just putting them on their property next door that they own. Hundred calls come through. It's outdoor storage. It has to be manufactured in Trade Street. And I said, I didn't want to tell Ms. Louise that ain't a letter. So I called on the phone. I said, I'm gonna come down to the store. I'm gonna talk to you. I explained to them what the zoning classification leave to be to go to. I facilitate walking them to the county to get it rezoned. And they came through successfully to rezonate. That's worst case scenario. Had that issue presented itself as a zoning issue with the code, with the cave, I probably would have called them down here. Look, this is what you have to do. But when I researched the cave, they were in full compliance with zoning. It was just a. Very minor issue in the inspection department. But my point is whether it's an illegal business, whether it's what we were talking about with the car dealership with the handicap space.
Yep, yep.
I talked to the guy, said, look, I can't sign this off.
Yeah, it's a no.
I can float gravel line through handicap space. You gotta pay those.
Yeah.
But I sent them to Hillside Landscape because that's the example of what we did it before. So there are things we do to break the lens, to help these vendors understand what the violation is. How you can fix it, but under those circumstances, they not feeling like they're attacked because someone's came and sat down and explained it to them. But that's what I struggle with sometimes where I just need to make sure that whatever I'm doing, whether it's Crampton Road, whether it's a code enforcement issue. You will consistently hear me speak to compliance with the code. That keeps me objective. That keeps me fair. That keeps me consistent.
Thank you, Chance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I forget it, I'd like to. Let you know that if it's okay with everybody, February the first at four thirty. Uh, we'd like to do the unveiling of the art mural on Trade Street. Mr. Brechner let me know that that would work for him. And then what we do is send an invitation to the Altries. The McLeans, the Arts Council, and then of course, put an invitation out that anyone else wants to come. And it'll be outside, so we'll be able to, you know, wear masks and socially distance. But, and the building is, the mural is already up. It's covered and Dennis Brechner will take him and someone else to remove the covering. But if that would work. Four thirty. I figured if we do four thirty, it'll be before it gets dark. And then that's, we have a meeting on February first too.
Yeah.
Six, February first the date you're talking about?
Uh-huh, February first at four thirty. Go ahead.
Something I, I forgot about.
Okay.
Why, in the seven presentations I had tonight. Um, we, if you recall, every year we participate in. An initiative called the Building Business Rally. Well, you know COVID pretty much hampered this years, but. What we're doing is I will be hosting the Building Business Capacity webinar on behalf of Town of Hope Mills on. Tuesday the twenty-sixth from, at twelve noon. And basically myself and, um, the Government Procurement Council. Will be the, the, I guess, presenters and we, we're gonna take this opportunity to provide the general public with. All of the additional bidding opportunities that are available for on the Public Safety Building, letting them know about upcoming projects and things of nature. So that the main goal of this is to try to blast out some of these projects we're doing to increase our bidding opportunities. But it's a one hour webinar. I'll post the, I'll send you the flyer for it and I'll post it on our social media pages. But it's a pretty cool way of just us telling people about procurement opportunities that we have, who we purchase things from. In case they want to be a vendor or if we have additional bid packages. I think Scott Gardner with the Public Safety Building. Indicated at the pre-con that they have a, a goal of ten percent inclusion of MWBE and minority women business enterprises. And hub certifications in terms of historically underutilized businesses. These type of initiatives are. Different programs that contractors can go to to find contractors in that demographic to help keep those numbers up. So that's something I just wanted, I, I meant to send it to Melissa in the manager's report, but I'll send that out to you guys. In case you wanted to, um, um, blast it out, we are asking people to register for it if they're interested in receiving this information. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have manager's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have something that I'd like to say. Over the past several months and especially during the recent holidays. Events occurred that made it clear to me what was important. And with that being said, it's time to begin a new chapter. I'm announcing that effective April the first, I will be retiring from the Town of Hope Mills. I have loved my position with the town over the last ten years. And I've grown to care very deeply for the employees and the citizens of this community. This is somewhat bittersweet. As I'm sad to leave the job that I care very deeply for. But I'm excited to begin a new adventure. And I'm happy to offer assistance to a new town manager as they get acclimated to the position. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have a motion to go to closed session in reference to personnel?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to conduct the closed session pursuant to ENCGS one four three eighteen eleven eight six to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And we'll go back to the conference room. At this time, you want just, Mr. Hartsaw? At this time, Mr. Hartsaw. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to seal the minutes of the closed session to such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session. And further, no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. I would like to thank Ms. Adams, our town manager, for her, uh, the whole time I've been mayor, she's been here with me. I appreciate all the hard work. I appreciate the fact that where you've led the town. We, uh, accept your retirement at April first. We look forward to extending that contract for another month. And just know that we, we love you, we'll miss you, but we've got some time together before that April first deadline gets here. So thank you so much for everything you've done for the town.
Thank you.
And with that, do we have?
We gotta do. Their official concerns first, staff concerns.
Is there any staff comments at this time? No. Okay, so at this time, we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Alrighty. And we'll see you. The next, the next time we see each other will not be until.
Maybe the police station will be done.
We have a meeting on the eleventh. On the first. I'm looking at January. We got a meeting on the.